Have an art honor show next week. Good luck to all of our athletes as they get ready for the potential playoff rounds. That's it for the high school, is that maybe?
Yeah.
Maybe she'll have more.
Well, we have a school member who's celebrating the birthday tomorrow.
That's good news.
That's good news. The year old kicking is good news.
After a certain age, birthdays are not good news.
Forty-nine again.
Yeah, right.
I heard that the high school-
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine.
I heard the high school boys', lacrosse team just won against Bishop Gordon.
Yeah, when you were walking in. That's good news. Do you want to say about the high schoolers or not? I'm just a side part for Ms. Roy.
Um, I don't really know. We just lost our game today, but that's not good news, so.
But you tried hard.
That's good news.
I can share, oh, go ahead. Do you want to do middle school?
No, I'm also with the high school. Have you got more stuff for the high school?
No, I have elementary.
Okay. The middle school, today and tomorrow, the sixth grade were taking their algebra test. It went well today and they'll do a little bit more tomorrow. Tomorrow, the eighth grade picture is being taken, so if anyone at home has kids in eighth grade, you want to look nice over the picture, make sure they dress tomorrow. The firefighters' challenge for the eighth grade is this Thursday, May 24th. On the 25th, this Friday, we're going to have Memorial Day assemblies. There'll be two, one in the earlier for the fifth and sixth, and then a little bit later in the morning for those seventh and eighth. On next Tuesday, Wednesday, excuse me, the 30th, the five-two team that won the stock market game gets to go on their winners' trip to get their reward for winning the stock market game. Also, that night will be a band concert. The following night on the 31st is the strings and chorus concert. The book fair's coming up next week, the week after, I should say, June 4th to the 8th. I want to remind parents of incoming fifth graders that June 6th will be an incoming fifth grade parent night, and June 11th will be an incoming seventh grade parent night at our school for those who want to come, ask any questions, take a tour of the school. June 5th, 6th, and 7th, MBMS student ambassadors will be attending Maple Ave, Bartlett, Dunbar, and New Boston. This is all part of our transitioning. They're all going to be going over to those schools, telling the kids a little bit about what it's like at Mountain View, asking them if they have any questions, letting them know a little bit about our school. And on June 7th, two things are happening. That morning, Kevin Scooper's coming for the sixth grade, and that night is a music awards night for the school. And also, it's, we're very proud of Andy Piska, who won the Unki Award for the, for the art, his video. It was very good, as a matter of fact.
They are-
The Unkununik Award for Video Award for our school.
They are on our website, too, on the front page, if you want to see the winners.
If you have a chance to go on the website and watch it, it's, they're all really good. They're really good. Also, I wanted to just let people know, let the public know, that Ms. Orcott is going to be giving strings, summer string lessons and private lessons, group lessons, both, starting in June and going until August. So if you have any questions, to call her at the school, if anybody would like their child to take lessons over the summer, she's willing to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
For the elementary schools, David from Bartlett is reporting that on April 19th, they had a very successful Title I night. This was grant-funded, and what we did was we invited, or David invited, Title I parents to come have a pizza dinner and an evening of math and literacy fun. The evening ended with the reading of the book Owl Moon. Each family received a copy of that, as well as bags with all kinds of activities for reading and math. And one of our goals of that is to continue to try to engage parents. Bartlett is our highest low-income student, and so the research shows, the more we can get into parents' hands, the better that is. So that was a great night. They had a lot of positive feedback and a huge attendance. From Maple Avenue, let's see, today, they had a reading dream representative who picked up $3,500 book, $3,500 books from Maple Ave and Mountain View as part of their book drive to send to Pennsylvania. So that was huge. $3,500 books is a lot of books to collect, so that's a great thing. Tomorrow night is literacy and arts night from 6:30 to 7:30. On Thursday, they have incoming first grade family information night, so families of new first graders can come and see the school and meet everybody. On Friday, they'll, all the schools have Memorial Day programs, but theirs will be at 1:30, so if anybody's interested in seeing what we do, that'd be great. And then, the week of May 28th is Wellness Week, and they're going to have all kinds of wellness activities in their Unified Arts classes. And on Friday, June 1st, they do their annual one-mile walk, which is always fun to see the entire school. They walk up the street and around, and it's kind of a nice activity to promote walking, so. Let's break the clock out of this.
Any other good news?
Actually, I just thought of something. I don't know what you said, but the blood drive is Wednesday?
No, we didn't talk about that.
Well, that's going to be happening all day, on Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, the NHS is putting that on. And then, on this Friday, I'm pretty sure, the Student Council is going to the state meeting, and that's a pretty big deal. That's a really important meeting that we always go to.
Quick question, if you know. Is the blood drive open to the public, or is it just for the school?
I'm pretty sure it is.
I believe it always has been.
Always has been.
Yeah.
Okay. So if you're watching and you have a pint to give on Wednesday, here at the high school, all day long?
Mm-hmm.
Terrific. Thank you.
Is it going to be in here?
I think it's in the gym.
In the gym?
Public comment? Tony?
Yes, Tony DeFranco, Gofstown. I've been kind of keeping track of the Mountain View situation that we've got going on here. And if we find this $30,000-plus in the leftover from the oil, wouldn't it be smarter to spend it somewhere else, like on some of the textbooks that we couldn't buy? We couldn't update a program that we were talking about earlier this year? I'm not sure if it was math or social studies, but every few years, we update the books in the curriculum, and we had to suspend that this year because of funding. So why couldn't we use that money for the funding of that curriculum? I don't know if it meets the entire line or not, but at least it could go towards it. And my thought is, we have an elected board and an SAU that should be able to handle this Mountain View problem in-house. I just, I'm a little upset the fact that we have to spend any money outside the school district to have somebody come in to tell us that we have a problem and how to fix it. I really feel it. We, as a community and as a board, need to figure this out in-house. I guess that's really all I have to say. I just like us to be responsible about the way we spend money. I don't want to see the board or the SAU put an indelible mark upon itself that it really doesn't need to do. There's a lot of negativity out there. You guys have seen it in the papers. I've talked to a lot of parents. I have friends that have students that are going into the Mountain View School next year. There's a lot of negativity, and I, we've got to be able to figure out how to get the community involved. If the negativity is not necessarily true, wherever all this comes from, we've got to figure out a way in-house to take care of this. Just my opinion. I know it's, others in the community feel the same way, but I'll let them speak for themselves.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we move along to standing committee reports, admin and finance.
We have a, I have to present a manifest this month of $1,518,504. And I am making a motion to present that to you.
Is there a second?
Yeah. The major items are payroll, $488,350. Payroll taxes, $152,792. For the LGC Health Trust, which is the May, May Health and Dental, $482,869. For a total of payroll, taxes, and benefits of $1,124,011. Special Ed, Crotchet Mountain, April services for one student, $24,221. The Lighthouse School, May services, three students, $23,665. And a provider, which is April Special Ed Transport, $41,431. For a total of $89,318. General expenses, electronics, these are for the high school safety radios, $7,000. Gofstown Truck, May regu, this is for the May Regular Education Transportation, $93,812. Again, Gofstown Truck, for the Gofstown High School, April Athletics Transport, $6,383. A bill to Lang Door and Hardware for the Gofstown High School Door Enclosure Repair, McGraw-Hill Education, Bartlett Everyday Math Texts, $11,351. And for Rico USA, for the May Business Machine Lease, $7,607. For a total of $131,354.
A couple of questions. The everyday math, are replenishment?
Everyday math was the purchase you, some of its replenishment, but also, in that last kind of list we gave to the board, those were supplemental to align with Common Core updated materials.
Now, two questions. Hank gave us some numbers on outside district placements and transportation. Were all of those for essentially a 30-day period?
Yes.
So if my math is right, and it's going to be off by a little bit, but for that very small cadre, for that small cohort, that was about $800,000, if you multiply that by nine months. And if it's actually a year-long placement, because we need to deliver services to that child during the summer, it's closer to a million. For, I think there were four or five students?
Well, you've got-
And I'm not singling out the students, I'm simply pointing at something that we just learned about the cost.
Those prices are probably in the ballpark, but Crotchet Mountain is for April. Lighthouse is for May.
But each one of them is a 30-day cycle.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
But those are not new expenses. Those expenses are outlined in the budget.
Right. No, no, I understand that.
But when isolated that way-
Right, absolutely.
It creates a certain picture.
Yeah. It's expensive to place kids out of district. That's why we continue to work on in-district programming and trying to keep kids in district as much as we can.
And I think Ray was able to explain to us in A and F that the state, although they have promised to reimburse monies over a certain amount at a certain rate, they haven't met that obligation.
In years.
Oh, yeah.
Not just the state, also the federal government.
Yep.
Yeah, exactly. But the mandate is still-
When it comes to special education.
Which is nothing new.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the manifest as presented?
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions? Or unanimous?
A couple of information items here. Be happy to know that the second oven up in Mountain View just failed. So, the good part is, the Food Service Fund will cover the expenses. There's about 108K in the food service balance now, and projecting 20,000 this year, in the black at the end of the year. And the price for the new oven will be approximately $4,800, so that should be covered. And a couple more information items. The after-school programs at Mountain View Middle School, that we put the RFQs out for, we got no answers. So Ray is going to follow up on that, see what's going on. The contract for Ross and for the new morning schools were signed. And Bartlett Parents, there's a question here, not to Bartlett Parents, if they want to try an A and project in A and School. An RFQ has gone out for copy machine contracts. And legal notices will be going in a paper for oil, propane, and paper. And on that one, the Gofstown Town Hall, Gofstown Town Hall, or Gofstown Town, Dunbar and Town and School, and New Boston School only will be in on the contract. And it's all information. That's it.
Is there one person who's vested with putting their imprimatur on it for everybody?
Ray. He does it all.
He's the man.
We've had enough conversations about that. Good. Anything else, Hank?
That's it.
Human resources?
We're making quite a bit of progress as we continue through going through policies that are over 10 years old, and either reviewing them, seeing that there's nothing changed, or bringing back any changes. Which kind of leads me to the two second reads that we have today. Sometimes we have little changes, in which we have, one, where we only change one word. In the HP, which is Employee Job Actions, we changed enforced to activated, because we thought it more gave the spirit of what was actually being done. The other one that we changed was CBF, which is the Code of Ethics for Administrators. The policy that we had taken was from the American Association of School Administrators and was from 1966. Pretty much, it's the same sort of standards, it's just changed the type of language. It was a lot more flowery back in the 60s.
Picture that.
The thing was flowery in the 60s.
So this is, we did get permission from the American Association of School Administrators. It's word from word for what they have updated now. So I would make a motion to approve these at the second read. If anyone wants a second read.
Do you want to do that now, or do you want to do it in the business?
Until such time as we've, is this the second read?
This is the second read.
This is the second read, okay. Because I have two sets, okay. Yeah. And is there a second?
Second.
Suzanne? Any questions?
My name.
Change? I started to get it right after watching Keith blow it for years now. Seeing none? All in favor of the motion as presented?
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions? Or unanimous? Maury, thanks very much. I know it's a more than a fair amount of work, I'm reading all of these.
Yeah. It has gotten better that we added in an extra half hour. We're actually getting things-
It's a little bit more time.
Getting things done, so we'll probably have some more first reads coming, too. That's all we've got.
All right. Playing communication?
We didn't meet this week. We will meet, is it June 7th?
Yep, I can answer.
Yeah. Your agenda says June 4th, June 4th? Whatever that first Monday is.
First Monday of the month.
Fourth.
Fourth. Since Jenny is not here, we can either defer CNE until she returns, or you can let Keith and I sort of fudge our way through it. I mean, I could, let's, let's let Jenny do it at our next meeting.
She did take notes and everything for it, so I hate to miss out on the highlight that we should share.
So we will defer the report out on CNE until the next meeting. Budget Committee report?
Budget Committee met last Tuesday. In general, they were expressing that Ray, the way you've provided your reports last year worked perfectly. There was one question about a cut ad report. Does that ring a bell to you?
Yeah, I can, I think I can work with you on that.
Okay. The question was, if we can do it, and if so, how labor-intensive is it and how much work? Phil Kendall had asked, the chair had asked. I don't think it's his intention to create too much extra.
Okay.
But if it could be a meaningful report.
Okay.
Other than that, they did extend their kudos to you for the reports. As far as we go, I think that sums it up.
I'll second the kudos, Ray, because I was the receiver of the report.
Thank you. Error Review Committee report? We reported it out last time. That'll come up as an item. Huh, should have been on Old Business. We will return to that, just to make sure that the committee understands its charge and has its authority. Superintendent's report?
Just a couple of things. The prom was Friday night. It was a great event. I saw all of the prom pictures today before all the kids saw it, and they looked beautiful. I saw yours. The kids looked great. I heard everybody was really well-behaved. Things went really, really nice, so that's a great thing. We continue to hire. Our goal is to have, Carol's goal is to have all our hires to you for our next meeting. I don't know if we'll have that. We have a bunch for tonight, and then, we were in the pipeline for several of them, so hopefully we'll get those done. We sent out, Gary and I worked together to send out applications, kind of for the 20 smart boards the board approved. We got 26 people interested in them, so we're going to look back and see who, where those are going to go. So people will hear about that this week, likely. I will have your representatives for school board at your next meeting. I think we have been able to get somebody from every level, so I'm just, I'm trying to put some final touches on that, and so I'll let you know what that is at the next meeting. There's lots of Memorial Day programs on Friday. If anybody's interested, just stop in at the school to let me know. Most of them are either first thing in the morning, kind of that nine o'clock time, or a one o'clock time, depending on the schools. Just some legislative updates, a couple of important bills that have gone through the House that are important to recognize. CACR, which is Educational Funding, which is constitutional amendment. It currently contains language that gives the state the full power and authority to determine the amount of state funding, as it may judge, kind of abbreviated quotes. It clearly puts the state, our funding level, at risk at some level of not knowing if the legislation sets what that amount is for adequacy. It can be changed at any point, it can be adjusted, so there's a difficulty with us predicting what that looks like. There's a committee conference meeting on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, May 22nd and 23rd, if anybody's interested, and they're looking to try to come up with a compromise at that The SB 372 and HB 1607, which are both the tax voucher bill, the, it's actually the educational tax credit where businesses can donate money to a scholarship program, has passed both of the House and the Senate, those bills, and so at some point, they will get together and come up with one bill, which will head off to the governor. We're unsure as to whether he will sign it, let it pass without his signature, or veto it. I do believe it has a veto majority, can override it by the vote that was done. Let's see, so, yep.
Is that the one where we get $3,500 normally, but if somebody opts, we lose $4,500?
I haven't been really clear on what that dollar amount looks like that we would lose, because they added some other things in here, so what it does is it, it will lower the revenue for the state, because clearly, people won't pay taxes on that, those dollars, they'll donate it to the fund, which will likely then go to either private schools, religious schools. I think it's up to, I believe it's up to $2,500 and up to $250 for homeschool students, so homeschool students could actually apply and get money for their programs. What they did add in the bill, which is probably one of the pieces that is a plus for us, is that, let's see, they added a limit, let's see, both bills recapture state adequacy aid to locals, thus increasing the local property tax, but do limit the total amount to a quarter of 1% of a school district's total voted appropriations for the prior year, so that we can't lose more than a quarter of 1% of adequacy through that. And that's going to be done through a stabilization grant, as well, as long as that's funded. And so there are some big questions out there, who's going to monitor, this would go into effect January 1 of 2013. So again, with all the cuts at the Department of Ed, the question is, who's going to manage this? How is it going to be managed? Who can apply? Is it recurring? So there's, right now, that will go into kind of regulations at the next, after that gets passed, to develop what that looks like. There was also a bill that was approved, SB 373, was approved by the House on a 245 to 68 vote. That enables a legislative body to approve school districts retaining up to 2.5% of their net assessment. And it was, that was amended, I believe in the Senate, to include city school districts, as well as, interestingly, Manchester Regional Vocational Center, that was added in there as well, because that must have been a question. So if this passes and is signed, it will allow school districts with the vote of the town to be able to do this, to be able to put up to 2.5% away, kind of what, like what the town is able to do at this point.
Allowing for a fund balance, up to 2.5% of-
Correct, basically, yeah.
The appropriation, is that?
It says of their net assessment in this update.
Oh, I wonder if that's the state's assessment piece? You know how one of the tax review gets two different pieces?
Yeah, it could certainly be. And there was a couple of bills that were adopted by the House, clarifying the district's financial obligation for charter schools, and clarifying that. It's also my understanding that both the House and the Senate bills were passed for building aid, and are likely going to be signed, some compromise bill will be signed. The difference between both bills is that, and I don't, can't remember if it's the House or the Senate, one has an allocation attached to it, the other does not, which means the legislators can put whatever dollar amount in the budget they want. Their goal is to support those districts that already have building aid promised to them. Anything left will go into some kind of system where it will be ranked by the state based on safety issues, needs of the town. And so what will happen next is that that will go to the Department of Ed for writing of the regulations for how this will be managed and looked at, but it is likely that it will be a process. We likely will not know before we, so with this project, like at the elementary schools, we likely will not have a clue if we're eligible for building aid until after it's been approved. And I'm guessing that's how it's going to go, because until they know how much money they have, and what's been already approved, and what's been voted in for budgets, it's likely that we won't know whether we have, they have enough money to be able to fund our project, somebody else's project, what portion of that. So as those regulations come down, we'll be, Ray and I will certainly be watching those, because obviously, we're in kind of the middle of it, in need, so. Just a reminder, Wednesday, for those members doing negotiations, we have a negotiation session with the GEA at 7:00 at the SAU office. Thursday, for those on the area negotiations with Dunbar and New Boston, we have a meeting at 7:00 at the SAU office as well. Two just important nights coming up at the high school, other than graduation awards night, is May 31st at 7:00. That's always a great night, just a wonderful thing, the teachers all give their individual awards for students, it's just a great evening. And then Scholarship Night is the next Thursday, which is June 7th, 7:00, and that's where all of the scholarships are given out. So another great evening. That's all I have.
Although this is a little bit off the page, if you haven't looked at the tax bill you recently received, I would encourage you to do so. It was interesting to do the math, because here's, here's what you can learn from doing the math on your own personal tax bill for your property. That if you divide the state's education tax, as well as your local education tax, by the aggregate amount of taxes, you'll find that the percentage that is going to education, whether it's actually coming to the town or not, because part of that goes away to the state and some of it comes back for the time being, is 55%, which is somewhere between, and these are ballpark figures, sort of as an average, the number that a community generally allocates to education is between 63 and 68%. So we're running about- So we're running about 8 to 13% below average, depending upon where that is. And we're fifth from the bottom, in terms of our per student. Just some stuff that percolated out, because I opened my tax bill. It's, it's interesting to sort of look at how this community supports education, and what the district does with the support that it gets. Kind of a double-edged sword.
Neither.
I might encourage you to do the math and make sure that we're all paying the same percentage. Old business. Job descriptions.
Oh, I have a new and improved packet.
Thank you.
Because we just did these today. So I took, I met with Carol Kilmister, who developed these. We looked over Jen's recommendations, the ones Dan had made at the last meeting, as well as Dan had sent us an additional one, so you'll see it, all of the changes we made. The majority of them were really just technical, making sure we're consistent on things, and we appreciate that feedback. Sometimes you can look at something 25 times and not notice something is different. Just for, Jen, I wanted to, just to review, because you had some questions on the, kind of like the sitting and standing and that stuff.
Yeah.
So it's, so if you look at the first-
The thing was, it wasn't consistent.
Yeah, so if you-
You know, we had some administrators 24 hours, sitting, standing.
Right, so, so it doesn't add up. It's not, it's not cumulative, okay? So the consecutive hours is what you would kind of normally expect.
For a consecutive activity, like, sitting for two hours, sitting, standing.
Right, right, so, sitting, right, sitting, so like, for example, I'm looking at head cook. So consecutive hours, we wouldn't expect her to sit for more than one hour at a time, because that's not the job.
Right.
Total hours in a day would not exceed one hour. Standing would be up to, consecutive hours is two, I'm thinking of, the whole thing. It's bigger.
It's big, yeah, I kind of had to be guessed, too.
But total hours may be three, so it could be, on an average day, is two, so when you see, like, so for example, an administrator, sitting may be expected two hours, but it could be up to eight hours, or standing could be up to eight hours in a day, because if there's something going on that that administrator would be standing, we would need to expect that. Any given day, they might be expected to stand, so it's not cumulative, Adam.
Certainly, nobody's gonna go through and police and say, okay, now you stand up. No.
Right, no, these are guidelines for us.
My point was that it wasn't consistent throughout all, you know.
Right, because everybody has different jobs, and so the expectations are a little different, so.
Some people had, you know, like I said, up to eight hours, sitting, standing, and, and that was, that was total hours.
Right, but, but don't look at total hours cumulatively, like you would add them down.
Okay.
So it's not eight times three, we expect somebody to work 24 hours. It's total, so if it says total hours eight, that would be, on a given day, there might be a day where you might have to stand for eight hours. It doesn't happen every day, but if there's a crisis or something's going on that you would need to stand, we would expect that you could stand for a maximum of eight hours.
Yeah.
But on a typical day, consecutive hours, does that make sense? So it's, you can't add the three up. It's not gonna equal.
As long as it's consistent. There didn't seem to be a consistent voice, as I read through the packet, so.
Well, that hopefully will explain it. So, and it isn't consistent, because different job expectations. And yes, they would stand up under the E O C, because we have given those to them before.
Okay, so smelling is a requirement of every job.
It is, yep, yep, because if, if there was a fire, as a principal, you'd need to be able to smell that there was a fire. You'd need to be able to see to get out of a building, or support other people in getting out, absolutely. These are pretty standard, like that, those last pages are, pretty standard.
And everybody has an evaluation now?
Yep, yep, we added everything in there, so. And I think when she tracked them, you can see all the changes on the side.
Yeah. When will these come up for review again? Or are we voting on them tonight?
Well, I'm hoping you'll vote on them tonight, because this is like your fifth meeting that we bought them to.
But we haven't had a chance to, I don't know, review the changes. I mean, I, I made some, did, I, I offered some. Did other people offer some as well?
Dan had given us some at the last meeting, which we made, and then I think he said he reviewed yours, and you had captured most of his.
Yeah, I agree with yours, and I sent one other that said there was one on the head cook. It almost looks like the one from the, the cook disappeared, rather than the other way around. Is that what you remember, Stacy, or is it, or it didn't get added at all?
Say that again.
The suggestion that I made for the... Let me grab it. There was... Uses positive and effective human relation skills when dealing with students, the public, peers, teachers, and administrators. That was on the, I think it was the food services assistant. And I thought that was a fantastic saying, and I was surprised it was sitting there, but I didn't see it in the others. And I was questioning whether it might be a good thing to have it on. Oh. That, that's what my email was for.
I don't see it on the assistant, though.
It's not the, I didn't see it on the assistant either.
It's on the assistant cook.
Like, about, like, the way down.
Oh, assistant cook.
Yeah. It says assistant.
It just said assistants, period. One, two, three, four, five, six bullet.
Six bullet?
Oh, I see, okay. Yes, it, so I'm looking at assistant, and I'm looking at assistant cook. It's, it's on there.
Just for the cooks, I had gone over, and I was still looking for, I went through the entire package, and so I didn't stay. I just said the principal of the elementary school, that was the next one, the principal of middle school, the principal of high school. I just went through all of them and thought that was a fantastic goal, or a performance responsibility, is, is that saying? And I was, just my suggestion.
Jen, I can, just, there were a couple of things we did not add. We did not add something specific to an attendance or an engagement in after-school activities requirement for principals. That's a, that's a professional responsibility. They, an administrator attends every event. I mean, that's a requirement that they already have to do as part of their professional responsibilities, and administrator. But, and those are events. I would never expect a principal to attend the Scrabble Club. I mean, they're, they're here, for all schools.
Is being in the building considered attendance? I mean, yeah, you say the Scrabble Club, as a joke, but are you also saying that an administrator being in the building is satisfying the attendance requirement?
Yeah, there is an attendance requirement. I mean, there is, they go to the events, they're visible, there's a problem, they're there. There's typically an administrator at every event.
Just, just as an aside, you know, Dan, you make a, you make a good point, that language in the policies doesn't necessarily follow anything other than, I think, the function. And the, the portion that you cited in the assistant, uses positive and effective human relation skills when dealing with students, the public, peers, teachers, and administrators, appears to also be captured by strong consultation skills and ability to work effectively and tactfully with students' parents, as well as staff members. So, so I think that it's something that is captured repeatedly in different areas, depending upon what the person's functions are.
Okay.
And Jen, the other was, you had a, I'm just trying to think of all the ones we didn't change, was the type, the position title for the food service, is because those are what's in the contract and approved by P E L R V, so we didn't change those.
All right, so the assistant is just an assistant.
It's, yeah, and that's how it's listed in the contract, and that's what P E L R V has at us, so.
I'm glad you spelled out other acronyms.
Yep, we have, spelled them all out. I think we tried to capture, Carol went through them, I mean.
I would, I would do two things. First, I would, I would thank both Dan and Jen for digging in and looking for consistency. The second thing I would ask is if there is anybody at the table who wants to make a motion on moving the job descriptions forward for approval, we can do that now. If there's a consensus to for either further questions, or you wanna wait and review yet again, we can do that, too.
Would you like to, would you feel more comfortable, Jen, if you had a couple of weeks to look at the changes?
Just one. Just, you just-
Well, one meeting, is what I'm saying.
One meeting, yes. I would, I would.
Do you need a motion to-
I, I don't. The absence of a motion answers the question.
So might I suggest, if we do more job descriptions, that we send them to H R maybe, and have Carol go to that meeting, because I feel like this is just kind of dragging on a tad bit, and we had the conversation, what was the best avenue to do this, and I'm feeling like it just keeps, like, this is meeting five, I think that it's come back, so. Maybe a more effective way for this board to respond would be to have it at H R, and have Carol come to that meeting, and can talk about what's, make recommendations.
We've already done second read and adoption. C I P matrix. We've all had an opportunity to look at and review. Are there any items on the matrix? Are there anything that you think ought to be added to the matrix, deleted from the matrix, or changed from the matrix before presenting it to C I P?
Let me ask a question. It makes sense to leave this boiler replacement, kind of concerns me, that it's still being pushed out. Do we have anything from a professional that looked like, and says it's not imminent, but it's okay for 2015? Because it's, a cold school is not a good learning environment.
It was supposed to have been done in 2012.
Right, and it says $48,000, and I know we've been coming forward and looking at some of current appropriation, unspent, and whether or not it might make sense for this body to think about that. The reason I bring it up now, because it almost looks like it's, it's separated, but it's, it's C I P, and do we just go with C I P and, and think of that as well, and then it could come off C I P, so it's harder to put something on than take it off.
You're, you're talking about the Maple Avenue locations. There are actually two boilers in that, one being replacement of the existing single boiler at the facility, which is what we're looking at here. The second one is contemplated as part of the elementary renovation and reconstruction project. We were bundling both originally, as we brought the bond article forward in March of 2012. We didn't make it. We are proposing again to bring the bond article forward in 2013. If we don't make it that time, we need to replace the existing unit that's there, and that's why it's identified in the 2015 timeframe. So we can do two by bond, if we are awarded the bond. If we don't, then it becomes a necessary project, and it really needs to happen in 2015, and no later.
Because as it's currently postured, the vote, the 2013 vote, would allow us to do it in the July to, July 13 to-
The 2014 timeframe.
Exactly. And then in order to secure it, if we need it in the operating budget, because we don't get a bond, then we'll have to, it'll be the 2014 vote.
Another couple of years out.
We're comfortable that we're gonna get a couple of years out of it.
How old is it?
As comfortable as you can be.
Yeah.
It's gonna be 25. It has been, it has been evaluated and inspected, and there are no identifiable problems with the unit as it stands today. But it, age says.
It may be time.
Up to that age, that tag.
On page two?
Yep.
Line 368. The personal thing that I think, in lieu of the Bartlett and Maple Ave, I think that should be pushed out a couple of years. I think it's pushing the envelope too much.
Which line are you, um?
Talking about the theater and athletic fields.
Oh, 268?
Yep.
So, the, probably the one, the one thing that, that it makes sense to include as part of a process like that, if we push that out, is having some sort of plan for dealing with the track, yeah.
Yep, and I know they are trying to organize a meeting. I, I do know they've reached out to a couple of companies who do track, direct work to meet with G P W, to find out what they can do and what they can't do, because it isn't as simple as just putting asphalt down. As was indicated.
I don't think the D P W, with the surface down.
Yeah, so, I think they're trying to get together with a company that can say, okay, D P W could do this. I think they can dig it up and lay the bottom paving, and then the company would need to do the top, or we're waiting. I think they're trying to coordinate a meeting as we speak.
So is there a, a feeling or a consensus here?
You can always do it later, but it's just not-
Yeah. I mean, it's, as an individual member, sort of sitting on the side, instead of at the front, it would be nice to have that piece, that, in place. It gives us more flexibility, it gives us more of an understanding of timeline.
Well, I'm not, I'm not asking for anything right now.
Yeah, okay.
Putting it out there, move the thought.
It is. Any other items? Inns, outs, changes, moves? Seeing none, I, I-
Can I just add something? There are a couple of items that are on here that I actually have as, on my, under the additional 11, 12 budget requests, that I actually have on that list, so.
Okay.
That would then come off, I just wanna, if we determined to go forward with them.
Okay.
So I just wanna add that in there, as I was thinking, but.
Okay. So it, it, it may get modified by decisions that this board makes to do things that are included on the C I P, out of our existing fund balance.
Oh, okay, now I understand.
Okay.
Do we wanna put this aside for a moment?
Well, that's, that's the question. Do you wanna act on an hour wait, do that, and then come back to it?
Why don't we hear what Stacy has? That way we could send something to Suzanne, that she wouldn't have to fix later.
Okay. Can we jump ahead?
Sure can. Stacy loves when we jump ahead. So here is a, right. So I continued to meet with administrators in all of the buildings, to continue to look at our fund balance. Again, a lot of this money is coming from savings and staffing, the money we put aside for retirement that we didn't need, oil savings, so it's accumulation of all of those. Some of this is things that we've put off doing, some of these things that have been in the budget that we've cut. Some of these items are things that you may not have seen, but have been a need that we haven't addressed. So I'll just quickly go through the Mountain View. The back parking lot pavement was something that was cut in the budget. Looking at a fence to go around the playground, to try to contain a playground area, so that balls and things won't go out into the roadway, where we do have active traffic. Replacement of the office carpet and tile. Right now, the office and all the small offices are carpet. What we would be looking to do is the secretary's area and the offices carpet, but tile the main walkway. It gets a lot of traffic, and so therefore, we talked about tiling it versus carpeting it, keeping the, where people sit as carpet, so it will continue to absorb some volume, but where the majority of people walk, putting tile to preserve it, and maybe get some more use out of it. Entryway carpeting is similar to what we have here when you walk in the school. Entryway carpeting is similar to what we have here when you walk in the schools. That entryway, we replaced the high schools the other day. The middle schools looks atrocious. It is, I think, probably original and it just looks horrible. So looking at replacing that. Softball field work, this is...
Wait a minute, is that just that, like, 12 by 16 foyer area that you're talking about?
No, this is all of the stairwell. So any stairwell, any entryway. So if you, so like the big stairwells, it goes all the way around the stairwell. So they're pretty significantly big areas. And they're, at the middle school, they have those, they're different colors, but they're the square. They're made, I don't know what they're made out of, but some kind of recycled something or other from, they're pretty old. Yeah.
Tires.
Tires. And so kind of looking at what we did here at the high school, doing something all one color or something that will look nice and match the walls. But they're, they're pretty old and they look pretty bad.
And I'm sorry, where is, it's that front foyer and where else?
It's all of the entryways. So any, anywhere there's a stairwell, so the one, two, the four stairwells. And those, the stairwells are the biggest places because they, when you walk out of the hallway, they're all the way around to the stairs. And it's expensive. It's a little more expensive than just doing carpeting. Because of the material, you want something that's going to last.
I'm sorry, in, instead of carpeting, is there a different type of, kind of like if we're going to do tile somewhere else, would there be something that might be durable or last longer that we could do there?
Yeah, I think because they're outside accesses, you want some kind of carpeting there because it's going to, you want something to capture the mud before they get into the schools. So some kind of carpeting like we have, it's, I think we're looking at something similar to what we put here at the high school. So tile doesn't necessarily work because you'd just be, I think, dragging mud even further than, because they're all the outside entrance ways. $5,600 to do some softball field work. And so fascinatingly, I was like, it seems like we just did softball field at the middle school. But it was Friends of Softball revamped that field in like five years ago, almost six years ago. And so they're looking to pick up, and I don't know enough about fields, but pick up whatever it is and put down new, I want to say dirt, but it's not dirt, I'm sure.
Like gravel.
Yeah, whatever it is that's on the field. It's just something that really needs to be done. And a new laptop cart. And further on, you're going to see a request for high school computers. So if you look down, kind of a quarter of the way through Goshawn High School, we're requesting 43 computers for the graphics for the, that department. And so what will happen is those computers in that, in those rooms will trickle to the middle school. The middle school right now, because their computer lab, computers were sold, are actually using laptops in those. And so what we would be doing is moving the high school computers to the middle school. Those laptops would then go onto carts so that we could have, you know, carts in the classrooms again. And so that would, again, open up some additional access to technology. Further down, you'll see 16 computers for Glen Lake. Again, another issue is because we haven't purchased computers in a long time, Glen Lake has like 12-year-old computers. Because what happens is we trickle them from the high school to the middle school to the elementary school to Glen Lake. And unfortunately, because we haven't purchased computers in a long time, the ones at Glen Lake are ancient. And it used to be the day when we'd say, well, they don't need high-tech computers because they're really just doing basic stuff. Well, they're not doing basic stuff anymore. You know, with, with smarter balance assessment coming out, which will all be technology-driven, we need to really start thinking about our technology use. We need to think and make sure that even our kindergartners are proficient. We're starting to be proficient in computers and keyboarding and making sure that they're ready to go when they have to do this online assessment in second grade. But all of our, our Reading Streets program has online components. And because our computers are so old, they're struggling with getting access to them. And so it's just one of those things, when you don't buy for what technology, it's, you know, computers are something that don't, you know, they need to be turned over every once in a while. And it's been a while since we've purchased lots of computers. So we're just finding that need. So those kind of go together. So if we get the, if we buy the high school laptops, the high school computers, we would filter those down and we wouldn't be looking for a laptop cart to put those carts, those laptops back on a cart. A set of bathroom partitions for eighth grade. Again, this is something we continuously keep cutting out of the budget. High school, $25, $2,500 to repair the heat coil in the boys' locker room, which broke, which we don't have heat in there as of this moment. Not that we need it right now, we're hoping we don't, but at some point we need to repair it and it's an expense. We also need to fix the fire alarm panel. The fire alarm panel here at the high school right now is continuously saying something is wrong. And so we've been working with the fire department to fix that and figure out what we need to do. And it's about a $7,200 replacement. Installation of the safety netting system. So last year, we purchased safety nets for all of our outdoor venues so that the balls don't fly onto cars and things like that. Steve and Jerry looked at it, thought that Jerry's guys could install them once we got them in and looked at the amount of work and effort to do that. Never mind that, we just don't have extra custodians who have time. And so it's, we have an estimate of about $5,000 to install those for the materials needed to install them and to put them up. So again, I think that's a safety thing. I think it will help us to keep balls off the cars, out of the mush. And since we own them, it would be good to probably install them. The music department has requested some software. T4 is classrooms, we're looking at some additional outlets there. You'll see the 43 computers.
What is T4?
Is a classroom.
Tech.
Tech classroom.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, Philip, do you have anything you want to do for Jimmy?
I've got one. Should I even say there should be four? Along with the request for the smart boards, I had three teachers from the high school in our tech department, they don't want smart boards because for them it isn't conducive to their teaching. But what they asked for was a ceiling-mounted projector. Right now, they have to borrow them and, when they can, and use the mobile ones. And so they have requested three of them for each classroom.
Just like, yeah, so what's a smart board, unit cost, ballpark?
Just about $5,000, I think it was.
Okay, so these are actually less expensive than buying.
They're definitely less expensive. Let's see, replacement of the theater doors, the back entrance has been a concern. Chimney expansion, this is an interesting one. It's, it's one of those we've talked about a lot. One of the chimneys here at the high school, when we added the addition on, the chimney wasn't raised. And so when it's running, the smoke goes into the windows of the other floor. And I can't tell you the specifics of what floor, I have more detail. But what this would do is expand the chimney above those windows so that on those days that it's on, it won't go in. And it's funny, so we've talked about it, it's never made it into the budget, but it's something that when it smells, everybody goes, why didn't we fix that yet? And so that's one of those things that we're looking to do. Sound upgrade in the gym, again, increasing, revamping the entire sound system there to make it better quality so everybody can hear. The next two kind of go together. So we need to replace the back floors in the cafeteria. That is an item that is in CIP. So we're looking to do that. And in addition to that, looking to, and the sports fans would be ecstatic about this, would be adding some basketball hoops to that back gym, which would actually, if we're going to, we can't do it now because the floor is in such bad shape. But if we replace the floors, putting some basketball hoops in, that would create actually another gym for us to use.
The back gym is the one that they actually serve lunch in, correct? It's the one furthest?
It's the furthest one in the back, yeah.
Okay. What do we call that middle area?
That's the senior calf.
That's the senior calf.
I thought the senior calf had no hoops in it, but the back gym had two. Am I wrong?
I don't think it has any.
Somebody around now.
I was a freshman, we practiced back there, but I don't know.
I think the back gym has two, one on each end.
Used to, but it still does. I'm just wondering, yeah.
I think those disappeared when we put the addition on. Because that was not going to be used as a gym anymore.
I don't know that we ever have basketball again.
I played in there, I think.
I know Patrick played back there when he was here.
That's a long.
I played there as a freshman unless they were taken out since then.
This came from the high school. Wasn't my request, so I'm assuming they know what's back there or what we need.
Right. So the cafe floor in the back gym, that's the same room?
Correct, correct. And that would actually then create an entire another gym space for us in the community to use. Might help free up something at some point. Portable dance floor and mirrors and bars for dance kind of go hand in hand. We get one, we would like the other. And that's going to create a couple of things. One, it's, it's going to be located on the stage. And so it will allow for, when we do theater productions for practices, but it will also allow us to expand our offerings through PE to create a dance class, to create different performance type of activities that would look at mirrors or bars and those kinds of things. So again, trying to expand with little things. And we have some uniforms, football and varsity girls and boys soccer wear uniforms. Haven't been replaced in a long time. Football helmets and shoulder pads, again, just safety kind of things that we just continue to look at. And some of this, the Olympic bar for the fitness room and the Smith machine. The Smith machine is a, it has, has died. I don't think it's electronic, but it doesn't work anymore. And it's, kids are using free weights now, which from my understanding is not a good thing for kids to be doing, that it should be a stabilized unit. And so we're looking to replace what has died.
Is that what a Smith machine is? Is it's a weight machine?
It's a weight machine, yeah, correct. And then the scoreboard in the gym. We just had somebody come in and fix it one more time and pretty much indicated that it likely is not going to make it another season. And so at some point, we need, it's either going to be an emergency buy or a pre-planned buy because we're not sure it's going to last into another season of using the gym. And then library carpet is again, another CIP item that we've put off. So Glen Lake, you saw the 16 computers already?
Quick, quick question. Equipment for the stage, portable dance floor, mirrors, bars. Those are new items, not replacement items.
Correct. We don't currently own them. Maple Ave, replacing the exit doors. If you recall, we replaced the, when you go in by the gym, we replaced those front set of doors. This is to replace that back set of doors that go out to the back playground. We have several two-prong sockets still in that school. And so we want to convert them over to three-pronged because I think right now there's lots of cords that plug into the two-prong to make three-prong, which is really a safety issue and shouldn't be happening. Some second step kits for guidance. Those are the guidance program that our guidance counselors do. It's been upgraded and so we want to purchase some kits there. And then roof replacement, that's another item on CIP that we've pushed off. That is not part of the building project. And so if we have the money...
Is that the original wing?
I think it's by the front wing.
The one that faces Maple Ave then.
Yeah. Bartlett, we're looking at. David has asked for a projection screen for the gym. And at Bartlett and Maple, they're smaller because we've been really cognizant of the notion of if a bond passes, I don't want to put a lot of money into the schools if, like Suzanne also asked for, like, she's been asking several years now for carpet replacement or tile replacement in the main office area. Because it does start to look shabby, but it is an area that will get gutted and reconfigured in the new building projects. And it's, it's a hard balance of, do you invest the money? If it's another four years, we would have used the carpet pretty efficiently at that point, you know? So you will see that there's less money. But David has asked for a projection screen for the gym. This would be a screen that goes up and down electronically. Right now, they have to bring in a screen and it just, for the gym, it's just not a big enough screen. And so looking at something that would be larger, that when they do assemblies, it would meet the needs of the school. And then again, bathroom partitions for the first floor, which isn't projected to be touched. So just replacing those partitions in that bathroom. And we've, again, put those things off. Kind of two things district-wide, an iPad cart. We have lots of people with individual iPads for different reasons, particularly for special ed. One of our things we want to look at is buying one cart and kind of, I haven't, why it's district because we haven't quite decided what venue would be the best place to put it. And exploring the use of iPads versus buying more laptops and the use of them for classrooms. And so just trying to get into the new technology. Lots of schools are buying them. I've hesitated because I want to make sure we're doing them for the right reason and the right purpose. And so I think, I think it is time to kind of dive in and, and buy a cart of them and access, you know, try to access them and use them for what we think is appropriate. So I put that on the list.
What's the quantity?
It's 20. They come in sets of 10 on the cart. And so then the other is another CIP item, is pickup, pickup truck replacement. Again, something that has been on CIP that we've kind of pushed out, we haven't talked a lot about it. The truck is in...
2003.
2003, so...
Can I ask a question? One thing that's always bothered me in the last eight years is that vehicle seems to manage to, I don't know, it's a magnet for dents and scratches? I mean, it's just every time I look at it, there's another one. I mean, is there anything that we can do to try to make people more responsible? Can we send them to a driving school? I, I just don't understand how come it has to be abused so much? I mean, that's a big investment and knowing how it's getting treated, it really bothers me.
Well, I mean, I also think it's used for some pretty tough things.
Used for hauling.
It's used for pretty much everything, you know? We need to move desks and chairs and file cabinets and anything, bulge.
I'm not talking the inside of the bed, I'm talking the outside. And does that cost include transferring the existing fisherman mount blade on it?
No, it's a new blade.
New blade, okay.
So again, all these are open for discussion.
What's the grand total of this wish list right now?
$458, 178.
Fund balance?
Fund balance is nine something.
$860,000.
And we've already approved 234-805. So if we add those two together...
And so again, the reason a lot of these are, because they would be, I think the policy is $5,000. They would be far overspent on those lines, we have the money in other lines.
Dan, what's the $200,000 you're talking about?
We already...
The 234-805, we, we said white boards.
Oh, oh, oh.
To replace the chalk boards and 120, the big one was 128,000 with the 20 smart boards.
Yep.
Is that this list?
It looks like it, yes.
Okay. When did this list come?
Couple of meetings at the...
Two meetings ago, okay. So I missed this meeting, probably the 16th of April, okay.
Yeah, because most of that has already been encumbered and purchased. Actually, I think all of it has.
So the fund balance is 860 and then less the 234-805?
No, no, 230, that's not included in the fund balance. That's already...
That's already been taken care of.
So there's still another eight something. So we're projecting that we wouldn't spend...
409.
Here's, I just thought of this, this is a process that I was thinking about. When, when the budget is created and it goes to public hearing and then after the public hearing, there's a statement in law that says no new items that weren't discussed or disclosed can be added to the budget at that point for that process. Do you have any gut feeling of whether or not we can add a new purpose into the current budget that wasn't disclosed at the public hearing that was, that was done for that budget?
I don't see why not, because if, if an emergency comes up and we need to buy something, we have to buy it. Like the, I mean, if this is not, like the heat coil that's on this list, but at some point we have to replace it and it wasn't in the budget. I think the, I think you can't add a different purpose. You can't add another line item that isn't in there. So if new equipment isn't in there, I don't think you can add new equipment.
Right, okay. The, the back parking lot pavement, because I know they talked about that.
We talked about scraping pavement, we talked about paving.
And I'm not sure if it was funded and then because it went to the default, I don't think that was, or just during the...
I think that was, that was deleted at the budget committee level.
Right, so it was disclosed. It just wasn't, what I'm saying is I don't know the legal ramifications of whether we would get challenged on any of these things. And I don't know if that's something that we are even concerned about as a group.
I'm going to have to make sure that we're operating legally and within the confines of the law.
I'm gonna have to make sure that we're operating legally and within the confines of the law.
Yeah, back in the day, we used to put a dollar on every line, just to make sure that that kind of thing didn't happen.
I mean, as far as expenditure goes, I don't know that there's any, I I mean, because if if the oil tank went tomorrow and it wasn't in the budget, we'd have to replace it.
I think probably easiest way to do this is is, you remember the summary that we developed a couple of years ago for the budget committee? That rolled up all of the lines, okay, into their.
Yep, the eleven hundred, the twelve hundred, yeah.
If if there's something in here that wouldn't fit into one of those lines, as as broadly scoped as they are, as opposed to one of the subset lines?
I guess the only thing that would be.
I think that's where we would run into, or might run into some difficulty.
Roof replacement versus roof repair? 'Cause that is something that needs to be done. And and I hate to have something needs to be done and then we get a challenge because we don't have to, it's, it's a five, 'cause I don't know the answer.
Those projects have been carried forward year after year and they've had to be cut, yeah.
On the CIP matrix.
So I think they have been disclosed publicly each year.
And you've gone through the list of things, I'm asking, this is actually a question, you've gone through the list of things that have been cut, that we've cut before, that the budget committee has cut and you're considering all of those things, the carpet and the back parking lot configuration, why is that not on here, the reconfig- reconfiguration of the back?
Because we tried to figure out what was the best interest of what should get done.
Okay, so it was a priority.
It was a priority list, I mean, I still ha- I could probably give you two more lists of things. Um, what I tried to do was look at CIP items that we have continuously put off, but at some point need to get done and knowing that it's likely gonna be another tight budget year, what can we do? And so looking at some of those larger projects, what are things that we have continually put off and like technology, like computers is one of those things that we are just finding that without increasing technology and having kinda stopped buying or buying in small volumes, we're just, they're getting old.
I mean, in fair.
I mean, it does.
I'm sorry, go ahead, 'cause you weren't on.
Just going to continue the conversation, what about books? What about the the cycle, the math cycle that was doomed?
Yeah, so we talked, I I think I shared this maybe at that meeting when this came up, so, so, yeah, but I can repeat it, 'cause it's worth repeating. So we had in the budget math textbooks that we cut. So what has happened, where we are right now with math is that with the new implementation of the Common Core, all the ma- all the publishers are now updating their textbooks for the Common Core. So it makes no sense for us to purchase textbooks at this point until those uh, textbooks are updated.
We'll get the end of a run instead of the beginning.
Um, so. Right, instead of the beginning, and so what we want is to make sure that everything is aligned with the Common Core, which is where we have to be in compliance within two thousand and fourteen. So, um, we have actually put that on hold and all the publishers we reached out to were like, wait, because why would you purchase something that you're gonna want to update?
Is that, is that the same for all of the curriculum, the English curriculum and the?
Correct, it will likely be, um, it's English and math, but the English Language Arts core curriculum also reaches into Science, Social Studies. And so we're waiting for a lot of that, the publishers are now working to get all those updated, to see where we fall. That's, so we bought at the, on that list, I believe was the everyday math materials, um, that first list, Jen, that you just had. Um, I believe there's everyday math materials, that was because everyday math has come out with a realignment already. And so we're actually doing some training with teachers at the beginning of the summer, um, and so we wanted to make sure they had the stuff in their hands for that training and had time to look at it, so.
Now, is four hundred thousand the buffer that we've got set aside, unspent so far? Is that just, do we plan on leaving that there? Or do we plan on trying to fund everything that we can so that we don't have to ask the budget committee?
Yep, so that will be up to the board, so here's where we're at now. If, um, the next meeting, we can certainly come back with, here's where we are. We, at this point, there's very little spending happening, most of it, I mean, we'll still have some things come in that we need to fund. Um, but for the most part, spending has trickled down because we've asked people to encumber the money. Um, so at our next meeting, we certainly will have more of a better, will encumber, anything you approve tonight, we'll encumber. Um, and then I am always more than happy to bring back another list to the next meeting if the board so desires as to where you want. Um, but I think Ray would be more comfortable once this is all encumbered and getting another dollar amount after this. As to give you guys a better idea where we are with the bottom line. When you start to get down to four hundred thousand, it gets, I I know in Ray's world, thirty-four, but four hundred thousand is small, like, like, it it doesn't seem like, it it seems like a big number, but it's really small, it's like a half or quarter percent of our budget. And so when you get down.
Interstitial space fails on the.
Right, and we're, as we get into June, it's a, where I feel, I feel like, you know, we won't have an oil tank break that we need to replace automat- you know, so, um, we'll have a little bit of a comfort level.
What was our projected on reserve fund balance?
A hundred thousand.
Oh, I'm sorry, textbooks, so we we haven't bought math, it's it's been at least three years that it's gotten cut.
No, math is just the first year, it was English Language Arts we put off.
So everything is, we didn't buy that, we didn't buy that, so everything has, and now you're saying all curricula are being?
No, so as we start to move then into the next curriculum cycle, well, I mean, so it will be dependent on how, I mean, we just updated ma- so math, we had a, we were using everyday math and we just now purchased all of the updated materials for math. So math will, math for the K to eight is in good space. It'll be high school, so it'll be dependent on how much the textbooks change, what that looks like. So you, that would maybe one we're out of sync on and will bring forward out of cycle, but we wanna make sure we're buying the updated textbooks. It doesn't make sense to invest a hundred thousand dollars in something. Science and social studies, it'll depend on how much.
Change.
Change happens, they may be like everyday math just created a supplemental, they insert and change something, you know, so if it's supplemental, it may be fine to just incorporate it, so.
Think of, look, look at the amount of work that's gone on and specifically in the area of writing over the last three years. And part of that has been writing across the curriculum.
Right.
And as you build new standards and new Common Core, you're going to build in those pieces that have worked and have been most successful so that they're occurring across the curriculum instead of, um, teaching writing in isolation. You're teaching in subject matter areas as well and again, that becomes part of the curriculum. So there's a roll-up piece of this that goes along when you have big changes in those two major areas.
And like, so in the Common Core, I mean, one of the huge changes is in the text, so they're getting away from, um, fiction and more towards informational text because ninety percent of what an adult reads is informational text. And so how do you interpret informational text? How do you do data gathering? How do you, um, do proofs? How do you, you know, do evidence from that information? And so that's really a huge shift away from one genre to another, to be able to gather, what do kids, I mean, it's all about college and career readiness. So what do students need when they graduate high school to be able to go off to college and to be able to go into a career and be successful? Which is, it it's a huge shift, um, although we're hoping continuing to align with what we're already doing. I mean, we've already jumped into the Common Core, Mary Claire has done a great job with that, um, on getting us that, we're actually, I would say probably ahead of the curve on that, we've already sent staff, we're sending a bunch of staff to trainings this summer, um, to come back to the district to then, um, do trainings with teachers on what that looks like and different processes, closed reading and things like that that are part of the new Common Core, so.
So, um, I I have a suggestion, Jenny, go ahead, please, sorry.
May I ask Keith a question? Um, Keith, when we were speaking with all of the administrators, um, and all of the people that came before C and E.
Yeah.
Um, you asked the question to all of them, if we had money, what would you like to see? Is there anything that you remember from those conversations that we could add to this list? I I know I would have to go back and look at my notes, um, to check on stuff, but do you remember anything that, that they specifically said, gee, if I could, I'd like?
I'll, I'll throw in.
Trying to think of the elementary school.
A general piece of the memory, I think most of it had to do with, um, the things that people were talking about with professional development.
Yeah.
So there's certain ways that you get to professional development and sometimes that means, um, somebody else in the classroom so that a cohort of people who are working in a subject matter area can all go do something. Or professional development, bringing people in or sending people out. And that was something that we did hear repeated.
Is that, 'cause I remember MC, um, was talking about that on that presentation. Do we have more money to put in the professional development?
The difficulty is, is this money, yeah, this money can't really be used to do professional development that's gonna occur next year.
So I will remind the board, though, that the budget committee cut that professional development line down from, I think, a couple of years ago was a hundred and thirty thousand, it's now twenty-five.
Is there something we can do in this fiscal year for staff development that may benefit?
Yeah, we already, I mean, it's it's so, I mean, we already have professional, I mean, we have a bunch of trainings at the end of the year, which we do. A lot of that comes either out of budget, which is already allocated, or out of grants, we have title, our title-two grants, we do that. We have a ton already scheduled, um, as much as you can fit in. Um, typically we'll do a lot of curriculum stuff at the, like, the everyday math training will be that last week of June, um, after school gets out.
Some, some of the PD grows out of other things that we're doing, um, if we're changing curriculum. There's usually a large professional development piece that goes along with that.
Yeah.
And I I think from listening to MC talk, we're using our money very wisely in that, um, you know, one teacher goes to a conference and then comes back and puts on a conference and then, you know, monitors, mentors people and so the, you know, one person's money goes.
We do a lot of the, kinda trained a trainer.
Right. A lot of teacher teamwork happening, which is great.
Because we have a long list here, um, but I think makes the, this is what I propose. If somebody has a better idea, I'm of all ears, um, if we go through by institution, um, if there is anything that you wanna wait on, um, don't wanna do it all, um, or simply you wanna identify the things that you feel are most important on the list, I think it probably makes sense to do it by institution unless somebody has some other idea, 'cause it's a long list.
I've got an idea, what I've been going through in my mind is I put it in categories, 'cause when we do this at the state, there are, there are certain categories that we look at. One of them is health and safety and one of them that I would put here would be like direct instruction and and other things like that. So when I'm looking at, 'cause I'd be most favorable to those first before some of the others. And, you know, you look at some, uh, we'd start back parking lot pavement, how back, are there ruts? Is it a safety hazard? If the answer is yes, then that's, I mean, those are the things that I'm looking to do first, those, those kinda things. Tents to go around the play- playground, was the, was that to try to keep kids from, from swaying out because of traffic?
Right, it's an active driveway.
That's a safety, that's a safety, so that, that is something that, you know, I can support. That's how I was thinking about going through these, I don't know if that's more helpful or less helpful.
Well, it it identifies a couple of answers to a couple of questions, um, but but if we, if we do that, what buckets? I, I mean, the other thing we can do is we can simply go top to bottom and and look at each item individually.
Well, let's start, let's start with the big sections of schools and just, I mean, and manage the the list at that point. I think it does make sense to assign a certain priority, as Dan said, to health and safety and direct instruction. My third criteria after that would be bang for the buck, who's, who's gonna get the most use out of it? Who's gonna, how many are going to benefit from the ability of having it?
Can I, can I ask one question, 'cause it actually ties a bunch of things together? Would you walk us through the technology piece and how those moving parts fit together? 'Cause if I remember correctly, there was sort of an if then?
Correct, and that was, so at the high school, they're requesting forty-three computers for the graphics department, that's the tech department, so those will go in there. If those are approved, then those computers will filter to the middle school, to their computer lab, which is currently using all laptops. Those laptops will then go to carts, so the, and if was on, under Mountain View, the new laptop cart. Um, and I put if, if GHS computers are approved.
Right.
Um, if the computers aren't approved, it makes no sense, 'cause the laptops have to stay then in the computer lab.
So if.
Was there anything else that was linked to that?
No.
Just those two pieces?
It was just those two pieces.
So if I made a motion to approve those two items, we could take those off the list right now?
Right.
I'd make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Fine.
Abstentions, opposed, we're okay. Good, okay, thanks, Dan, nice work. And I'm gonna just highlight it, we'll end up with a list that has some spaces and some other, are there, are there any other things that as you look at are dependent, that that fall into that same sort of category? If you do one, if you don't do one, then the other can't happen? 'Cause it doesn't make sense, I don't, I don't recall hearing anything like that.
Who are you asking this question of?
Yeah, no, those were the only two that were really tied together.
All right. Then, can we go next? And this is sort of defying what we did, but I think I'm gonna borrow Dan's idea. Can we go to CIP items next?
Sure.
Yep.
Okay, um. What's the first one?
I wanna add.
Cafes, GHS.
Was that CIP or was it caf- did you say doors or floors?
Cafe floors.
Oh, floors, sorry.
Yep, thirty-six, seven.
Which building are we in?
That's in GHS.
Okay.
I don't.
Library carpet in GHS also.
Yeah, there's four, I think, four CIP items on the, on the whole list.
Roof replacement. Pickup truck.
Pickup truck is district.
Yeah, how much, how much life do we have left in the pickup truck?
It's hard to say.
It's nine years old, have you seen it?
I haven't seen it, I mean, I get an idea from your description what it looks like, but.
To, uh, to get it inspected, we're having to spend now about six to eight hundred dollars a year on it.
And he's got the.
Forty thousand.
How about the, the Fisher Minnemount blade, the aging of it and the amount of, I mean, it's being used to push some serious wet snow at times.
Yes, yes.
Um, I would assume that that's not gonna start having hydraulic problems.
That's why, you know, the new plow setup is included with the truck, the new truck.
Yeah, 'cause it would be silly to pay to transfer it, 'cause I think that thing's gonna die soon.
Okay, well, I mean, I guess, I guess they're real, I mean, to the extent that that we even have a shot at having a decent understanding. It's really because of what it's used for, it's a transmission, drive train.
It's heavy usage.
You know, when, when it, when it goes, when it goes, it's gonna cost us a bunch of money. And then we'll have something that'll last a little bit longer.
What's the intent of the existing pickup truck?
Probably a trade-in, get whatever you can for it.
A push-pull drive.
And then I will know exactly where every dent and ding and I will personally inspect it once a month.
Would it not make sense to have a spare or backup?
That's what I was thinking.
Rather than a trade-in, you're not gonna get much.
Can we use it just on site? Because if we keep it on our property here and don't go on the road, we don't have to register.
By the way, it's at this, it's at this very question that the sales guy walks over and says, hey, Mr. Allen, would you sign that for me, please?
Yeah, I know.
So to say that it would only be used at this site would be, I, like, that would be tough, 'cause it's, they have it all over.
Yeah, but the new one can be used, this would just be a backup for plowing at this site until it dies, is what I was thinking. 'Cause you're not gonna get nothing for a trade-in on that thing.
I mean, I, I would have no problem keeping it and not trading it in, I don't know what the cost differential is, I didn't do all this, those dollars for that one. I would have concerns about saying it was gonna stay here at the high school, 'cause I think that would be.
If it's not registered, it doesn't leave the building area.
But I, I would worry that we would be then just, it would be sitting here.
The registration is how much, though, I mean, it's plus whatever costs it would be for inspection, it's the government rates.
Okay, Ken, is.
And insurance.
Insurance.
We have, we have.
I'll move the four CIP items.
You'll move them? Okay, that includes the pickup truck replacement, roof replacement at Maple Avenue, seventy-eight thousand dollars. Library carpet, GHS, thirty-three, you're sitting on it.
Yep, and caf floors.
And the caf floors are thirty-six, seven, the total would be sixty-nine, seven.
Can you remind me on the caf floor, whatever floor we're looking to put down?
One forty-five, seven.
Jerry was meeting with a gentleman, we had talked about a sports flooring.
Right.
But they have some concerns about the tables, so I think they're still, they're, they're about comparable prices, so I think they're still working with the guy to give us what is the best flooring.
Oh, okay.
It's the same as Mountain View, we're gonna put what's the best we can get for athletics and for cafeteria use. The concern with the sports flooring is the tables and the constant up and down of the tables, whether that's gonna make it worse or better, so.
Then there's the sliding on the dusting floor.
Yeah, so, but the, the cost was about the same, so.
Jenny.
I, I would really like them to look into that because, um, if we're having that be Parks and Rec and. I, I would really like them to look into that, because, um, if we're having that be Parks and Rec and, um, um, like basketball practice, it's a lot of, um, um, knee stuff. When you jump and play basketball on cement flooring, there's no give to it.
Yeah, and I think that's what, that's what they were looking at, the, the concern they had, the company had, was the table usage and the chair usage on the floors, and would, would it become, would the tables do more damage than good, um, on the flooring? But we, I, I think Jerry's been meeting with the guy and looking at the floors and trying to come up with what is the best material to use for that.
Okay. Sue, you made a motion. Did it get seconded?
Ginny seconded it.
Ginny seconded it. One eighty-seven, five is the total.
I did it for thirty thousand dollars less than you, by the way.
Well, then you...
But I trust her, I trust her number.
I raised a number.
Stacy, I think initially when you were talking of this list, I think you said that kind of paired together was the cafe floors and the basketball hoops?
Correct, but one isn't dependent on the other. It would be nice to be able to have another gym. Yeah, I mean, I would, if, if we can do the floor but not the basketball hoops, that's okay. One doesn't depend on the other. It would just provide us another opportunity to have actually another entire full gym to use.
So, so if, if you came back to us next time and said, "Hey, we went down there, there are actually two hoops back there, so we don't absolutely need them in there to make it functional."
Yeah.
We could go on a field trip. We could take a five-minute recess and go on a field trip.
I'm almost sure they were removed.
We'll, we'll, we'll never get back.
I've never seen anybody play basketball back there.
They used, they were certainly there in the eighties and nineties, but I think they got removed.
When we put the addition on.
Okay.
The last one in here.
Megan said she played there.
Yeah, I'm sure I did.
As a freshman.
Sure.
As a freshman.
And I know Patrick did and Patrick graduated and...
I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure, I mean, it's been three years since, since I was back there.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking, though, I mean, when we were there for the lecture, they were there.
You guys keep a pretty good going for a little walk, I shall be darned.
We can figure it out. Okay, so, so is there, is there any more discussion on the four CIP items?
Are, are you going to put any caveats on the truck as far as the old truck?
No, I, I believe that we'll have somebody make a good decision. I mean, I think this is, if, if there's, if we can get some more value out of it, and there's not enough value as a trade-in, then it's easy. But ours is not to manage that piece of it. So, all in favor of the CIP items as proposed, which include the pickup, the roof replacement, library carpet, and caf floors?
Yeah, aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We're unanimous. Okay. I, I have, I...
If you got any money left, can we fix the heat in the locker room?
That's, actually, that's what I'm going, what I'm, what I'm gonna do next, if it's okay with you? No.
Oh, we're gonna stay on that one?
What I'm gonna do next is I'm gonna go through the things that I believe all belong into a common category.
Facilities, like...
Exactly, that are, that are sort of, broadly speaking, a repairs category. And, and this doesn't require a vote, other than if somebody says no, I won't include it, okay? Back parking lot pavement, um, at MVMS. The fence to go around the playground for the reasons stated. The repair heating coil in the boys' locker room.
I would like to add the bathroom partitions.
They are in tough shape.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I missed that 'cause of the thing above it. Okay, so, let me go back. Parking lot, fence, bathroom under MVMS. Under GHS, heater coil, fire alarm panel. Safety netting system is to keep balls from hitting people's cars.
Yeah, and we've already got the nets.
Yeah. I might pull off on that for this round if...
Okay, that's fine, yep, that's fine. Theater doors, back entrance?
Yeah, they're rotten at the bottom, aren't they?
Chimney expansion?
Yeah.
You think we'd get better draft as well and better...
Ida, you, beats me, good, good point.
Was that, was that dress? Because if you have a better draft, you better have better fuel economy, and it's cheaper.
That's right.
Okay, so, so at GHS, the list now includes coil, fire alarm panel, theater doors, chimney expansion, and I don't see anything else that falls into that category.
I agree.
I, I think I'd probably throw the scoreboard in there, just because we know that it's gonna break.
Okay. Anybody disagree?
I'm okay with that. That's a, you're, we're still in the repairs category.
Yes, yep, yep. Maple Ave, right.
Just to comment, the uniforms and helmets, again, there's a, uh, we've tried to maintain an annual update on those, to make sure that they're reconditioned, certified.
Helmets, definitely.
We had to pull those out this year, too.
Can, can we do that the next round?
Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay.
But, point well made. Um, under Maple Avenue, exterior doors, I would say that the change in the electrical.
Do you have a grounded output?
Yep.
At Bartlett, you hold the bathroom partitions.
Yep. I would say that also gets included.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven items.
Two, three, four.
Oh, there's just a few.
Five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, which part did I miss?
Make a motion and go forward with those.
At MVMS, replacing the office carpet tile, the interway carpeting was drawn in this category? It's maintenance.
I don't, I don't see it as...
I don't, I don't necessarily disagree, but for the time being, we've got agreement on those.
Okay.
Can you tell me what was on the Maple list that was, I mean, the Mountain View?
Back parking lot?
Yep.
Fence around playground, bathroom partitions.
Okay, thank you.
Ginny made a motion to, um...
It's, just a minute now, we'll hold on, just a second. We're replacing bathroom partitions at Mountain View.
Yeah.
That are a heck of a lot newer than the bathroom partitions at Bartlett.
We included bathrooms at Bartlett.
We took them out.
No, 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 those are there.
Okay, that was the missing track point. Sorry.
Okay.
Can we go, I'm sorry, can we go down the list one more time?
Yep, that's what I'm doing.
Okay.
Back parking lot pavement, fence, bathroom partitions, under MVMS.
Yep.
GHS, heat coil, fire alarm panel, uh, safety netting system.
No, we took that out, didn't we?
We did, I thought we left that in.
Yeah, Danny asked to include that one.
Yeah, we didn't include that.
We didn't.
No.
What about the six outlets for T four?
We should do the outlets.
Yes, no, which is a yes.
Six outlets for T four, yep.
Okay.
And that is...
Theater doors?
Yep.
Chimney expansion?
Scoreboard. Correct.
Scoreboard.
Scoreboard.
And under Maple, exterior and electrical?
Yep.
Under Bartlett, bathroom partitions.
Yeah.
Okay. Ginny made a motion.
Twelve items, nine, now?
Yep.
Yes.
So moved.
Ginny made it. Suzanne seconded it. Yes, that's your name, right?
Yep. Second suit, suit second, whatever.
Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We're unanimous. Well, thank you, thank you, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your help.
Okay, if I can update you on the basketball? So go to the source, the custodians rolled down the hallway. There are two baskets...
Wait a second, you didn't go all the way down a lot?
I trusted them, I said, are there basketball hoops down there? They gave me the whole scoop. So they are down, they do not go back up. Um, they're stationary, but they believe, and I will, if you don't approve it, I will confirm, I, they believe that it's for ones on the sides, not replacement of those, keeping those, but putting more on the sides.
Yeah, so it's a functional gym, so you have, so you have six baskets in the gym instead of two.
It's kind of small, and you have to six baskets.
No.
For drills, though, it would be helpful for, you know, for practice gym.
How many basketball hoops are they looking to put in?
Must be four.
Must be four.
Must be four.
Twenty-three thousand?
It's an awful lot of money.
Yeah.
A daily automatic, you know, push-up button.
Hey, they probably sell some more, too, you know?
And are definitely more in full, I think, on the basketball hoops.
Yeah.
Let me come back with that one.
Okay. All right, what are we gonna call the next category? Um...
Health and safety.
Upgrades. How much money we got left?
Or do we want?
Health and safety.
There's a, there's a couple of, uh, we do, I think those, most of those were health and safety.
We missed the bas, the football helmets.
Football helmet.
Oh, because you wanted, okay. And I thought that was the bang for the buck. I'm sorry. It's a combination.
You know, if, if we're gonna have the program, um, and the program serves how many players per season, I don't know, but...
We have the list. Fifty?
But...
Fifty, I think, around there.
Yeah, it's a pretty low number.
Having had a kid that just had a concussion?
There're gonna be more than a hundred.
Oh, yeah, there's gotta be close to a hundred kids there, easily, if not more.
And, and this is a program that we have. It's not like something we're throwing in. It's like a replacement program that we're trying to maintain, so...
Uniforms, yeah, we can, you know, run it through Bleach maybe one more year, maybe, but the helmets, I don't think, I don't think, that's not something that you wanna fool with. And the thing is, is that...
So do you have a motion on the helmets?
I will make a motion that we pass the helmets.
How about the shoulder pads?
Helmets and pads or just helmets?
You can't use them, so...
They kinda go together.
Yeah, the helmets and the pads, that's fine. Helmets and pads.
I'll second that.
Are these replacements for... Yeah.
Yep, these are current replacements.
Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Dan, you're saying?
Yeah, I'm gonna leave that one be for now.
Nope, that's fine.
Question. Did somebody give me the definition of a football uniform?
I think they're like the pants and shirts.
Pants and shirts.
Pants and jer, no, is it pants and jerseys or...
Yeah, I think it's pants and jerseys. I think kids supply their own socks and sneakers, and, but I think it's the pants and jerseys.
Pants and jersey.
And they get, like, in football, they get pretty abused, 'cause of what you're playing in, so...
I, I'd like to make a motion to approve all the uniforms, replacement of existing uniforms, which would be the football, varsity girls soccer, varsity boys soccer. I think that's it, right? I didn't miss any.
I would, too, because those go from, the varsity gets the new ones, the JV gets the old ones, Mountain View gets the... And some of the uniforms are on the really nasty, you know?
I mean, we haven't, there's been a really bad replacement cycle of uniforms, 'cause we've just been cutting them.
Most parents have been going out and buying them for their kids, right?
I don't, I don't wanna vote against it. I'd rather vote on more direct instruction next. Um, that would be where I would wanna go.
Well, we know we have enough money for everything on it, so I guess, either we say yes or no to this and just move on. But I mean, we've, we've cut that so many years.
And the fact of the matter is, is our kids go out and they're a reflection of the school. And if they're going out looking like ragtag kids, it's a reflection on the way we maintain our schools, you know, so that's...
Proud that our low-cost per pupil spending makes our kids still look good.
Yeah.
But they do have to be replaced, and if you don't go on that replacement cycle, then I know there's some Mountain View kids' uniforms that are completely disgusting.
I mean, I can tell you, like, our, our track across country kids, that we don't even have enough uniforms, so they compete in every other meet, 'cause we only have enough uniforms for them to compete.
If, 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 the, the motion that is on the floor and that has been seconded is to purchase the uniforms, the aggregate cost for varsity boys soccer away, varsity girls soccer away, and football uniforms is eleven thousand dollars.
Do we have a count perhaps of how many sets of uniforms are being purchased with these funds?
I don't.
Well, let's see. I bet we can take a, I bet we can take a good run at it. I bet it's about a hundred and thirty.
For each one or just in total?
No, for football.
Foot, in total. In, in, because if, if football includes all football?
Yeah, just, well, that's it, so, the seven thousand dollars for football uniforms is for a hundred and...
Well, no, no, I'm, I'm guessing. I'm, I'm saying that at a minimum, you gotta have at least fifteen, and they're probably more than that, soccer uniforms for each, for the aways for each one of them. And it's probably more like eighteen.
Yeah.
So there's, there's thirty-six students who are, who are in uniform wearing, assuming they don't switch jerseys halfway through. And football uniforms, if that includes all of the teams, um, that's gotta be, it's gotta be close to a hundred, that's...
But we, but we don't know.
No.
Well, it's something that the athletic director has put together as the cost that he needs for the uniforms that he needs, so whether it's twenty or ten, it's what we need, and that's what the athletic director has looked at the book and come up with a price. So, I mean, we can talk about being however many there are, that's what the cost for what the team needs.
Just the fact that we haven't purchased any uniforms of any kind for a considerable time now.
Right, we've been slowly, I mean, a lot of them have been cut in, so I think last year we purchased one at the end of the year.
Yeah.
But I think we've...
So, if, if there are no questions, there's a motion on the floor, but if anybody hasn't, Ginny?
No, I was gonna make a motion if it hadn't been made.
Okay, there's a mo, there's a motion on the floor. Any other questions?
Who seconded that motion? I thought Ginny had seconded the motion.
Ginny has had a very long day.
'Cause I made the motion, and I thought you seconded it, so...
I'm sure you did. And, and which ones were it again? The, the football and the soccer?
Soccer.
Right. Varsity girls, varsity boys soccer, and football. Seeing no further discussion. All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? Two abstentions?
And four.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I'm not against the uniforms. I'd rather see something more direct instruction for it.
All right, here's what that leaves.
Direct instruction?
On direct instruction, we have, um, music class software, three ceiling-mounted projectors for technology. And I think we got a pretty good explanation for, um, why those have been asked for.
Computers for graphics.
You did those already?
That was the first one.
Yep.
Yeah. The computers at Glen Lake.
Let's see. The sixteen computers at Glen Lake. The second steps kit in Maple Avenue, which is a guidance program. And I would argue that the computer screen, excuse me, the projection screen for the gym,
Yep.
which is designed to serve all students for a variety of different programming at Bartlett, and the iPad cart for the district are items that would fall into that category.
And I give a little info on the Glen Lake sixteen computers.
Yes.
So, because of the fact that we haven't bought computers in a long time, the computers Glen Lake has are like twelve years old. They're, because what has typically happened is they go from the high school to the middle school to the elementary school to Glen Lake. And they're just not functional anymore for what we're trying to use them for, so...
For the testing and everything.
Right, and so we're, you know, even, even the software, anything that they're using them for, just, when you get a computer that old, I mean, you just, they, I think they, they're the old Apple, the old Macs, those huge Mac things.
So, looking at the pricing for sixteen computers, can I presume we're talking about upgraded software as well?
Yes, it's the whole package.
Okay, with, with the instructional software that's on there for what they're using for now, or whatever we have can be used on it?
Yeah, and most of it's online, but with the poor performance of the computers, they can't, like, so, like, Reading Streets has an online component, which they can't really, on, on occasion, they can access when they're working. So this would give them new computers versus always having the hand-me-downs, um, because we just don't have hand-me-downs at this point to give them.
I'm sure we'll approve those.
Second.
Go through the list again. It's the music class software?
Yep, let me go through it. It is music class software, ceiling mounted projectors for the technology wing, sixteen computers for Glen Lake, second steps guidance at Maple Avenue, um, project screen for the gym at Bartlett, and the iPad cart for the district.
And the iPad cart, you said, was twenty computers?
Correct.
Being used district-wide?
Those will actually land somewhere. I just don't know what the best, I, I need to meet with Gary. We need to have conversations about where the best place to try them out will be, so, because they're on a, I mean, we, we certainly can't move the cart from school to school, so it will go in a school. We just don't know what the best school to start with is for those.
Do you have a thought on which population would likely get first crack at those? I'm just curious.
In the sense of?
Well... Who's gonna get them first, I guess? What, what was your thought?
What kind of software, maybe that would help, what kind of software is being used, what kind of training?
Well, there is no software on an iPad.
Well, they're, they're apps.
Right, right. So, like, so, for example, here at the high school, they would use them as opposed to ne, buying an expensive computer... Right, right, so, like, so for example, here at the high school, they would use them as opposed to needing, buying an expensive computer for a classroom, say a biology classroom who's doing some internet stuff. Instead of needing an entire computer, a cheaper version of an iPad, you can access online, you can access different textbooks, you can access different materials. At the elementary school, you may see more like at Glen Lake, if we put it there, it may be more apps that they would use. And so, I think it depends on the school, the difference is, like, so, because they're kind of one-to-one computing, they're not ma, like, to use them in, like, at the high school, they're not made for kids to do work on. Like, to write a paper, because it's a one-to-one, it's on that compute, on that iPad now, which they don't then have access to, so, that's what we're, we wanna invest in one part to try to figure out. What is the best resource and best way, we know schools are using them all over the place, what is the best use for us? And so, starting off with one and making a conscious decision of which school it goes in for what purpose, and continuing to evaluate what that looks like before we invest in more.
The children can save to the server here on an iPad. So, you can use it.
Depends on how they log in, I don't know what I'm about them to.
You're not gonna be doing Word documents, things like that on an iPad, you're gonna still wanna use a computer for that. But, you know, if they're saving, you know, something from the internet, they can do that.
Stacy, was the interest in the iPads coming, generated from the idea that these little MacBooks are discontinued?
No, it's just coming from new technology and new resources and new ways to introduce technology into the classroom. And I will tell you, more teachers, more administrators have asked for iPads, like, it is, I will tell you, it's the technology. I think at some point it will overrun laptops in what we purchase.
I won't give up my iPad.
Yeah, it will become, when we figure out the right use for them, and this is just a start, I mean, there are schools that have hundreds of these already in their schools. We probably have thirty of them, mostly for special ed students. We're kinda behind, I've kinda resisted going there, because again, I wanted to do it, I wanted to make sure Gary was comfortable, I wanted to make sure his tech guys were comfortable. They're very different than a laptop, they're not something our guys can fix, so they break, you know, send them out or they're done, you know, so it's, it's a different, it's a different application for them, and we want to do it cognitively on what we're doing and how we're implementing it, so. This is the first phase of looking at that.
Can I ask a question, do you know, on our laptops, Apple provides a three-year service contract, are they providing something like that on iPads for the school district?
I didn't bring it, but there is some Apple care to it.
There is.
I think it's like a year, I don't wanna quote on that, but I, there is something that's attached to these for insurance, and I didn't bring all the quotes with me.
Any other questions? All of these things are presently bundled together. So, you know that whatever you choose to do, either will result in revisiting, or no change, or agreement across the board. I mean, there are a bunch of different things that can happen here with the vote, with the motion that's on the table, so we may need to revisit. Just because there, if somebody decides that there's an item on this particular list.
The five list.
Yes. That they simply can't support, and if there are enough people who agree on a variety of different items, we may need to go back to square one.
I just wanna make sure I have six things on that, I have six.
I found six, so you would, you'd be asking someone to make a modification to the current motion?
I'm not asking anybody, I'm simply pointing out the obvious.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table, a second?
There is a motion, there is a second.
It's voted.
I appreciate.
Which of the ones on this motion?
Which are the ones on this motion, they are, the music class software, the three ceiling mounted protectors, projectors for the tech wing, the sixteen computers at Glen Lake, the second step kits at Maple Avenue, the projection screen at Bartlett, and the iPads for the district.
I would like to modify the motion and separate out the iPad cart.
Okay. Who made the motion?
I did.
Okay.
Oh.
It would be up to you.
She can make another motion to modify, I'm not.
You wanna make an amendment?
I wanna make an amendment.
Okay.
She needs a second.
That's fine, that's fine. If it was a modification.
All right, the word was four.
Yeah, she wants to make an amendment, which is fine.
I'll second her amendment, so that we can continue and go on.
Yep, any discussion on the proposed?
Shouldn't we call a vote if we wanna do an amendment?
Well, we can discuss the amendment first.
You can discuss the amendment first, okay?
Yes.
Any discussion on the amendment?
I wanna know why, Ginny.
Well, even though, you know, it's in this list, yeah, we can support this.
You're right, we're discussing the amendment.
Well, even, I won't be long, Sue.
You can vote on the amendment till you find out why.
I won't be long, so, even though we have enough money to support this. It is, it would be a new technology coming in, you've postponed bringing in these. There are other projects that we haven't discussed yet that are on this list, are, I don't know, I guess. I just can't get, we can always add it back in.
I'd like to call a vote.
Do you need more information about how iPads would be used in the classroom? I really don't know a whole lot, but I have had a lot, I have had teachers talked about some of the really cool things that you can do with iPads that are individualized, that you can't do with a smart board. I'm not the tech bureau, but I just know that that's what teachers have been talking about, that there are some really cool things that you can do with iPads that are more individualized, and you get a better picture of how kids are doing individually with an iPad. You can use the smart board, and it's a whole group activity usually, you can have kids independently go up one at a time and do things with the smart board. The iPad, they have to do that on their own, and I guess because of the software, you must be able to know what the kid is doing and have it record somewhere, so that you get a better feel for where they are. That's what I've heard.
Okay, piggybacking on what you've said then, where it's an individualized experience, it's not, in my mind, it's not a bang-for-your-buck value to spend thirteen thousand dollars for twenty iPads.
It depends.
Yeah, Jen, let me clarify, because it's.
I'm in support of technology.
It depends on how you look at it.
Yeah, at some point, yes, I think it would make sense, and I, I'm not saying it doesn't make sense even now, it's just something I'd like to consider on its own.
I just know that there are teachers who really are excited about the possibilities of what it can do for us.
No.
Can I interrupt for one second? I, I'm sorry, please excuse me, I have to, we're a one-horse family tonight, and a one-parent family, and I gotta go get a cab. I apologize for losing the mail address, I'm gonna leave Diane to finish up.
I'd like to call the motion, will we vote on the amendment?
You're gonna call a vote on the amendment?
Yes.
Do you need a second here to call, or?
Don't need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Do we need to vote on the call?
Right.
Yes, we have to vote on the call.
We need to vote on the amendment.
No, we need to vote on whether we call the.
Call the question.
Call the question.
All in favor of calling the question?
Aye.
Proposed, abstentions, we're unanimous on the call, the vote on the amendment, all in favor of the amendment as proposed. Aye, one, two, three, four in favor, all opposed.
That is five, so which means the amendment fails, we're back to having.
You're back to the motion.
We're talking six items.
Six items.
And I'd like to call that motion now, too.
I think we already discussed it, so. All in favor of the motion on the six items as presented. Opposed, abstentions, Hank, you're opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay, do you wanna speak to your opposition?
No.
Okay, so we're seven one oh, seven one, and now, now I'm gonna go.
Okay, good night.
Thank you very much for your indulgence.
Okay, so this leaves us with, at MVMAS, replacing office carpet tile, entryway carpeting, softball field work.
I'll make a motion to approve the softball field work, because it does need some repairs, and we've really relied heavily on donations from friends of softball to do what we've done. And it's very well-used, that field continuously.
Okay.
I'd like to, I'd like to see us put some of the school's money into it and not just rely strictly on donations at this point.
We also have, if I can just finish what we have, we also have the Olympic bar and the Smith machine. Does anybody feel that either of those go into the softball field category, where they are athletic equipment for athletic programs?
My motion is just for the softball.
Just for the softball field, Ginny, you had a question?
I almost think that our baseball field at Mountain View needs more work than the softball, because the softball's had a lot of work done to it.
I'm thinking baseball field was on that last, or no, it was here at the high school list.
It's not high school.
I mean, don't you agree, Barbara, the baseball field is kind of.
Are we, are we, the big issue is with the pitching mound, that was a big issue.
Yeah, I can't, I can only go by what Steve said, like, I couldn't tell you what the rationale for it was at this point.
Yeah, we're only voting on things that are here, right?
Yes, and these are recommendations from the different administrators.
So, we have a motion on the table to approve the softball field work, do we have a second, by Jen? We are missing two members.
Three, no. Well, no, but two expect to come back, one's not coming, so. It was here.
So, it was here, votes.
Okay, all in favor. Five, six. We don't have anybody left here, opposed or abstained?
That the Gluediers have stepped out.
Okay. Which?
I'm sorry, what was the vote?
All in favor, six.
Six.
No, opposed, I don't know if there are.
Two left.
Counts an abstention or not.
Nope, nope, they just don't count, 'cause they stepped out of the room. Oh, you usually know that the Gluedier stepped out, that's all.
So, what this leaves is our portable dance floor, mirrors, bars for dance, Olympic bar for fitness room, and the Smith machine for fitness room.
Installation.
And then, the installation, I'm sorry, Philip had that highlighted, but you're right, the installation of the safety netting system, the replacement of the office carpet tile, the entryway carpeting.
What have we got left at Mountain View?
At Mountain View is the office carpet tile and the entryway carpeting.
I'll move those two items.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, Hank, seconds.
Hurry up.
All right, all in favor. One, two, three, four, five in favor, opposed, Jen opposed. Okay, this brings us to the installation of, and at GHS, what we have left is the safety netting system, we have the nets, we are just looking to get them installed. And then we have, oh, did I miss a sound upgrade?
The sound upgrade, the portable dance floor, basketball hoops, we're not gonna talk about those, we have more information.
We asked for more information, but it's a portable dance floor and the mirrors and bars for dance.
Yeah, the Smith machine for the fitness room.
We did the rest of them.
And the Olympic bar. And that does sum us up.
Oh, there it is, I missed it, thank you.
Yeah, they have a bar for the fitness room.
I'd like to know what the Smith machine is, does it?
Here, I can show you.
Instead of using free weights, you're using this for lifting your weights.
Safer for kids.
It's, in other words, it forces you to, it's stationary and it forces you to be in a better form to do the weightlifting.
It's like that, it, yeah, it follows on a track.
You know, you see them at gyms.
Well, you see a bunch of things at gyms.
Yeah.
Ginny?
I think those things are really safety considerations, because the Smith machine and the bar and the net. Especially the bar and the fitness machine, because if our kids are conditioned the right way, they have fewer injuries and game times. So, I think it's important for them to have the right information, the right equipment to work on, so that, to eliminate those injuries, so, I think it's a safety issue.
Is there a motion, oh, I'm sorry, Hank?
What is left that we haven't?
What is left is the Smith machine, the Olympic bar for the fitness room, those are both for the fitness room. If we go up, there's mirrors and bars for dance, as well as the portable dance floor. And then the installation of the safety netting system that we have already purchased, we're just trying to install that.
And sound upgrade.
And sound upgrade.
You know, he highlighted that, he's messing with me.
No, sound upgrade's not been put on yet.
Okay. Do I have a motion on the floor?
You do. I'll move the GHS items.
Sue's moving all GHS items, do I have a second?
Yes.
Second, Ginny?
All except the basketball hoops.
Right.
We're waiting for information back on that.
So, just to be clear, we are moving the installation of the safety netting system, we are moving the sound upgrade in the gym, we are moving the portable dance floor, the mirrors, bars for dance, we are moving the Olympic bar for fitness room, and we are moving the Smith machine for fitness room.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Okay, all in favor? Six opposed, abstentions, one abstention?
I have one technical question for you, did we approve the music class software? I don't have that checked out.
Yes, we did.
We did, okay.
Instruction.
Okay. Now, I just forgot to check it.
Okay, which then, according to my records, correct me if I'm wrong, we are left with.
Everything except the hoops.
The hoops.
Yes, I'm moving up to Mountain View, because we have, the only things that I have left are replacing the office carpet tile and the entryway carpeting.
Yep, we did those, we just did those.
Thank you.
So, the only thing left on the list that wasn't approved was the basketball hoops, and I will get more information for you next week.
I would like to ask.
If there's anything else that you wanna throw in there?
If there's another list to come, we've just approved a sound system upgrade in the gym for the high school. I know that the middle school is working with their parent group.
Yep, it's installed, it's done, I think there was some technical wiring that Jerry needed to connect with them for the cafeteria piece of it. I believe it's all installed, that's my understanding, is it's been installed, the gym is all set, the cafeteria, there was something with, the guys who came in and installed, they couldn't do some kind of electrical work, so we needed to hook him up with Jerry to get that last piece done, but that's been purchased, I believe, all, fully installed, it was just waiting for that last little piece of electrical work to get done.
Okay.
But if anybody else has other thoughts, as you are in our buildings, or ideas, certainly email me and we can research them.
It's been a while since I've been in Mountain View, but there was also conversation back when I was parent group president about installing more components to the climbing wall.
Yep, I think that was, I think MVP has done that, I don't think it's been installed, but I think they've committed to the money for it.
Can you just confirm?
Okay, we are back on old business D, Dunbar and participation in sports.
Actually, so, jump back to C now, CIP.
CIP matrix.
Because now you can take out, so basically CIP will be minus, so approve it minus all the things you just approved.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Did the carpet replacement?
Did the truck.
I'm trying to exit off if you can.
Yeah, be loud while you do it, would you? That's where they are, where are we, so.
So, under Maple Ave, the roof replacement, line two fifty-two will be removed.
Okay.
Under the high school.
Nothing in Mountain View, right?
Right, under the high school refurbished cafeteria floors for gym expansion.
Page one.
That's line two sixty-five.
Two sixty-five?
Yep.
Two sixty-seven.
Is the carpet replacement for the library.
It will be removed, and then the pickup truck on line two seventy-six, I think that's the four. Is two sixty-nine changed at all, improve event parking in hard-scape traffic areas or no?
No.
That's not anything about that, okay.
So, it's those four items that will be removed.
And the pickup truck, okay.
So, you'll be approving that list minus those four.
Okay.
I'm going to extend it with the adjustments.
I'll second that.
Do you have a second, so Dan and then two seconds?
Right.
Discussions?
No, what's in the discuss?
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
We're unanimous.
You've got your marching orders.
Thank you.
Thank you, well.
Okay, now, we are old business D, Dunbar and participation in sports for fifth and sixth graders.
So, many, many, many meetings ago, this has been a longer process, 'cause it went from here, I had took to Dunbar, and I backed to Gosdow to Dunbar, and I ended up doing a survey, so, several meetings ago, we talked about, Dunbar had asked, actually, this came from an area meeting, whether fifth and sixth grade students could participate in some sports at Mountain View Middle School, even though they did not attend school there, and so, I've met extensively with Mike Garrity from the middle school and Steve Fountain from the high school to look at those opportunities. I brought it back to Dunbar, because we had some questions, I actually did a survey of Dunbar and parents to see actually how many kids would be interested in doing this, it's really small. It's really small numbers. So what I tried to do, um, was put together a proposal based on, um, all of the information we've gathered. Both Mike and Steve have seen this, they both agree to it. So, in general, what we, what I'm requesting the board authorize us is to allow us to kind of enter into and allow Dunbar and fifth and sixth grade students to enroll, given these parameters.
I have one problem with it. It's just the word you put, the fee will cover uniforms. I think we need to be a little bit more specific because it's not all sports we buy uniforms for. Some of the uniform items are bought by the parents.
Parents, right.
So I think we need to clarify that, when uniforms, where provided, when provided. Because I don't want them to come and say, well, you said that, I wasn't going to have to pay for uniforms.
Um, so basically, fifth and sixth grade students can participate in cross-country wrestling and track. Those are the three non-cut sports, um, so we're not eliminating the ability of a, a Goffstown student won't get kicked out of a sport or cut because of a Dunbar student. Um, there's going to be a limit of five students. I did not even get five students who were interested in participating in every sport, but meeting with them, we wanted to put a cap on it. Um, because it may grow through time, and we wanted to make sure again that Dunbar and students weren't putting us over the edge of needing another bus to transport students. And so, taking this in small steps with the notion that we'll start at five, if we get more than five, it will be on a kind of first come, first served basis. Um, and we will reassess that kind of annually, so if after track or cross-country gets, you know, six kids wanting to participate in the next year, ten kids. We will step back and maybe reassess that and come to the board with a different proposal or a different thought or whatever that looks like. We'll have much more of a feel for it. Um, at this point in time, I have like one or two kids who may be willing to participate. Yeah, so it's small, it's looking at small numbers. Um, there'll be a parent paid fee. I put fifty dollars in here. That's open for discussion. I don't think it should be more than fifty dollars. I think fifty dollars should be the maximum. But I, I thought that was a fair dollar amount for.
I think it's very appropriate.
Being able to participate. I looked at kind of what Parks and Rec charges and tried to figure out something in the middle.
I paid more than that for softball, the kids, so.
So, um, that will cover, will, um, uniforms when provided, coaches, meet fees and busing. Um, the fee must be.
Be a little more specific on the busing too, that's busing to meets.
To meets, because, yeah, because it says here later on that transportation to and from is.
Right, but if we can.
Who gets kid from Dunbar to here?
The parents, that's the next. So let me just finish, let me read it, and then if we need to amend anything, because I think I've tried to cover it. Um, the fee must be paid prior to the beginning of a season in order to participate. Dunbar and parents are responsible for all transportation of students to and from practice and meets at Mountain View Middle School. Students may take the late bus from Mountain View to Dunbar and Elementary School at the end of practice, because it works, I mean, that's what we have late buses for. Times will vary particularly on days of meets, and so, we wanted parents, so Dunbar and parents are responsible for providing transportation to Mountain View. There is no transportation unless Dunbar decides we're going to pay for transportation. Parents are responsible for doing that. Days of meets, the reason it's varied is days of meets, sometimes at one forty-five, they need to be there. And so parents need to recognize that that, it's not always at three-ten that they need to be there. The Goffstown School District will provide Dunbar and Elementary School with information pertaining to signups for these sports. It's the responsibility of Dunbar and Elementary School to publicize this information to parents. So, we own getting it to Dunbar, but Dunbar owns getting it out to their parents. Um, it's the responsibility of the Dunbar and parents to complete all necessary documentation for the child's participation on these teams. Dunbar and students will be expected to uphold the same standards of behavior and expectations as all students participating in athletics in Goffstown. Should a student not comply with expectations, the same consequences will be applied for all children. So, just that, the expectation is, you're participating in Goffstown and you follow Goffstown rules.
I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, I had thought at the area agreement that it, there was some New Boston interest also. But was that more with the, um, the cut sports, I think?
I don't, I, you know, I, I remember Dunbar asking, but New Boston hasn't ever said anything. I don't remember New Boston asking.
They have their own Parks Department, they have their program.
Yeah, and with a bigger school, I think they have more opportunities.
It wasn't, okay.
No, I think it was just Dunbar. And Dunbar's been the one who's followed up with me, asking.
And the other thing, question I had, um, should we put something in that about liability for those children being Dunbar's liability?
Yeah, so once they, once we allow them into our sports, they're our liability.
Yeah.
So once, yeah, I, I think that would be a standard, once they're at our school, get, on their way to school, they would be the parent. Once they're at our school and we've taken them on as a participant in our sports, they would be our liability.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think there's any way around that.
That would suggest you. On the, the, uh, fifty dollar fee?
Yep.
When you say it, uh, cover a uniform, coaches, meet fees and busing. That's busing to the meets.
Correct.
I will put it in here because the next paragraph you're saying they got to, apply transportation.
Yeah, we're also adding uniforms when provided.
When provided, yeah, I'll add those.
Jen, you had a question?
Actually, he just covered it.
Okay, Dan, did I see you have a question?
Yes, it was, good lord, getting old and listening to other things is horrible. Because the students aren't students of Goffstown, but they're participating in our sports. Are we sure our insurance will cover that liability?
Yes, because it covers those students when they, when they come, when they're seventh and eighth grade and they're participating.
Right, but they're, they're students.
It's a contract.
Yeah, that's fifth and sixth isn't.
We can double, we can double check, but I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, but it doesn't hurt to double check. That would be the only caveat my vote would be for, to make sure with the liability.
That's what I was thinking. Yeah, so let us definitely, if, and I don't know where the board is, I, so the, I'm only under time control because Dunbar only has one more meeting left, and it's. Oh, is it, maybe actually?
We can make a motion conditional on that our liability insurance covers us.
Yeah, that's what my thought was.
I'll make that motion that providing our liability coverage provides, uh, as long as our insurance provides coverage for it.
All right, so Keith is, is making the motion that he approves, that it provides our liability, provides, has, provides coverage for it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dan. Any further questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All unanimous, Jenny?
No, 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 no.
Oh, wait, wait.
Ms. Tremblay didn't raise her hand.
I apologize. Oppose?
Yes.
And then no abstentions, I'm sorry, I thought I saw.
Did you want to speak to your opposition?
No, just think it's a slippery slope that we're starting down and I'm not comfortable with it. My skis are unwaxed.
Okay. All right, new business, A Manchester School of Technology.
So actually, I'm going to come back to you with more information on this. Um, I talked to Phillip a little bit, and so what is, where we are with MST, which is the vocational program in Manchester. If you haven't heard, they've gone to, um, a full day program, as well as they'll continue to allow our students to enroll in just the two-period-a-day program like we have. What is happening though is, because they're talking about it, is we've had several requests from students to attend MST full day. Um, and so, um, I wanted to get the board's thoughts on that, because one is it's a full tuition rate of ten thousand dollars, which is not budgeted. Likely those kids, we can still meet their needs here at the high school. So what I want to bring back, so this is probably more FYI at this moment, I will likely, I would like to bring back to the next meeting, a full proposal on kind of a process for us to follow to allow a student who would attend that, so that we have some parameters to go by if a student asks to go there. Um, that they would need to be required based on their educational needs or based on team decision to attend a full day program, that a child can't just decide they're going there full day.
Can't we just decide not to allow attendance in the full day program?
Well, you can, except there may be kids that we would want to go there, um.
Really, so would I?
Yeah, we, I mean, we may have some kids who it would be a benefit for them to do that. Um, I don't know that there would be a lot, and I certainly, while they're transitioning to this, I don't know that we would do this until it was a, I could actually see it in works, but, um.
Because it's actually, it's a different model of a program.
It is, it's supposed to be all competency-based, so there's no real classrooms.
Yeah.
Um, and so, I, I want to see how it works, I want to see them implement it before I'm willing to pay a tuition rate for it.
Yeah.
Um, but in the meantime, we, because when they go over there for the introductory, they talk about this full day program. Um, which is clearly open to Manchester students at this point in time. I don't know of any other sending district who is allowing students to go there unless they've approved it. And so, I'm just, I, I need, I don't have really authority to say no, um, so I'm looking for some direction from the board on that.
Can I offer a suggestion that, you know, we, you're, you have concerns, and I'm going to share your concerns, that we not allow full-time enrollment until we had a chance to evaluate this first year of the program and how it was implemented. I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second that.
Would be a fair motion.
Jenny, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, if a child or student were to attend full day, do they still get their core subjects, or are they just?
It's all, so it's, they do, but they're basing it all on competencies. So you would not take a traditional English nine class. You would demonstrate competencies through, um, work, through, um, study, through different means. So, it's not seat time. It's here's the competencies you need to master for ninth grade English.
So independent work?
Independent work. It might be, um, job, going out on a job site and working with a company on creating something for them, or working with them for that mastery of whatever skill that was. Um, but it's supposed to be more embedded within the curriculum. I just want to see how it happens.
Mike considers, I just don't know how it's going to work.
Yeah, because I'm thinking, we have to give them an English credit or for graduation, but are they really need our?
So like we offer, like we offer, like any child at the high school can take a competency. So, instead of taking English nine, they can apply for a competency, and basically they do the midterm and the final and whatever major project it is. All on their own, all independently, and then they meet with a teacher and have to demonstrate that they've met the competencies of that coursework. Um, we offer that. Um, we don't have a lot of kids, it's a lot of work, and it's, you have to have pretty much demonstrated the knowledge already. So, you know, it, it, it's helpful for a really bright kid who might have taken, um, a class, an online class independently maybe, and comes in and says, I don't really need this class, but I can demonstrate that I'm competent in it by showing competencies and get the credit for it. So, um, that's where it's, it's a really good thing, but they're going to this whole entire MST will be, it's called MST two point oh, um, which is really all competency-based.
I, I just have a lot of concerns with the fact, the, the budget issues in Manchester, how this program's really going to get implemented. I, I'd like to wait a year before we make a decision on whether we want to participate in the full day program.
How can they, how can they principal a hundred and sixty one teachers and then start a four-year MST program?
It's getting funded the first year by some significant grant dollars that they got.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, but is that a multi-year grant?
It's, 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 I think it's a three-year or four-year grant. I have, if anybody wants it, I can send you all the information they sent me. Um, it's multi-year grants that slows down at some point, but they're not, they're not really looking to increase staffing. It's a lot of professional development around it. I just, I'd like to see it in action before we pay the full tuition rate to send a child there. And we may come to a point where it may be good for some kids to be there all day. It's a, it's a, like a Massachusetts model where you actually go to a school all day long for that attraction, and we have some kids who would benefit from that. So I don't want to take it totally off the table, but right now, because MST is pushing it, we have some kids who are asking for it. Um, and so, some direction from the board on saying, you know what, we're not ready to say you're, it's okay to go there yet.
Okay, we have a motion on the table.
Mm-hmm.
Keith, can you repeat your motion, please?
My mo-, um, my motion is to wait one year and evaluate the first year, how it's implemented, and then make a decision on whether we want to participate in the full day program. Allow our children to participate in the full day program.
And that's what you seconded, Sue, Dan?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, um, lunch policy.
So Megan, um, actually Megan is actually working on revising all of our lunch policy appro, policies that I think will come to HR at some point here. But this is, um, she's actually asking, and Rafe, jump in if I can't, if I'm not getting this correctly, but she's actually asking, our policy allows for continuation of, um, charging all the way through June. Um, what we'd like to do is request the board to kind of amend their, just for this year, we're going to, we're going to ask you to amend the policy at some point. But we owe, we have over six, three thou, thirty-six hundred dollars in debt owed to us at this point in time. So what we would like to do is suspend charging ability in June, so that perhaps we can try to collect on some of this debt. But your policy pretty much allows charging till the end of the year.
What does that mean, charging?
So if kids don't have lunch money, they can charge it, and we just build an account for them.
What grade level is that?
It's all over. So we owe, like for, so obviously at the high school, they owe more money, but Bartlett owes ninety, total of all the students, not, it may, this may be five students, it may be twenty students. It's ninety, generally ninety-seven dollars. Maple Ave owes two hundred and sixty-five. Mountain View owes just about, just under thirteen, fourteen hundred dollars, and the high school's just under nineteen hundred dollars.
Guess I'm not understanding. I know, um, if the children get in the hole, like ten dollars. Is that what you're talking, to charge?
Right, so if they get in the hole, ten dollars, they can only get a, I think a cheese sandwich or peanut butter and jelly.
Peanut butter sandwich, very sad.
Right, so it is, but you know what, ten dollars spread over twenty kids is two hundred, so it adds up quickly, so what we.
What you're looking to do is take away that ten dollar buffer.
Right, what we want to do is, starting on June first, and Megan has it set up that she's going to actually touch base with all of these parents who owe money. Let them know that effective June first, your child will no longer be able to charge, um, certainly elementary kids, we are certainly not going to let them starve. I'm going to clear that out because we'll get them something. I mean, clearly, we're not, I mean, at elementary school, high school kids.
You got plenty of fruits at Bartlett.
You know what, high school kids, like, you know what, you don't have lunch money, figure it out. You're, you're big enough to figure that one out on your own.
Yeah, a little first grade.
So, so anybody who owes money on June first will not be able to charge, so that we can try to collect some of this debt. Um, it's just.
This is the worst year we've ever, I've never heard it number that high before.
What would you say?
It's been running about there.
Really?
What's driving it, yeah, what's driving it this year is that there's new, uh, new guidance out from USDA, which says the accounts have to be brought to zero at the end of the school year. What that means to us is whatever this debt position is.
We have to run it off.
We have to transfer from the general fund and pay for the delinquencies, if you will, in the food service fund.
Well, why am I paying for my kid's lunch?
Because you'll get lots of calls.
I don't care.
Mm-hmm.
So?
Yeah, so what we.
That's the point.
That's the point, so we want to on June first be able to say, we're sorry, you can no longer charge until you pay.
I'll move that we suspend the policy for charging for lunches, overdue lunches on June first.
Second by Dan.
For this year, right, for this year.
For this year, yeah, we'll be bringing back a policy change, revising it.
So just so that I'm clear, so charging means that a student goes through the lunch line and they punch in their number and they, they get what the offered lunch is that day. If they don't have enough in their fund balance, or if they've overspent it, they still get something to eat.
They get, they still can buy their lunch, up to ten dollars. And so the, then we send a notice home saying your child's over their lunch balance, or they get an email or however that works now. And, um, they get the notice. If they get to ten dollars and haven't paid that down, and they go through the line, the only thing they can get is a peanut butter and jelly or a cheese sandwich. Because it's really to, in the past, we've had kids with hundred dollar balances, because they just go through lunch, and at the high school, they go through the snack shack and charge everything, you know, so.
And the parents don't pay.
It was set into place of, to, to eliminate those huge balances, and so we have lots of processes in place now. This is just one of those that, um, a lot, we allow charging until the end.
So.
Okay.
If this passes, they're not allowed to charge, we just heard that we're not going to let them go without food.
They'll get a peanut butter and jelly sandwich.
How do they get, yeah, but that won't then be charged.
Yeah, so.
That's a giveaway, forgive me.
Our, our ele, our elementary kid, I mean, I, I would never hold a first grader responsible for a parent's payment. Um, I, I think this allows us to really say to a parent, you're not going to be able to charge. I, if a, if a first grader went through a line, I would, because I, I could never let a first grader go without having lunch, because it just, because a parent hasn't paid their bill.
That's not the problem.
Our, our, our elementary isn't where the problems are, it's our middle and high school. I mean, we.
Then should we make the suspension of the policy just for the middle and the high school then?
I would do it for all, because I think it, it sends a message home that this is not okay and you need to pay your bill.
Yeah, but I'm still having a problem about the peanut butter sandwich, if we're not going to charge it, then it's not going to be added to the bill.
That's correct.
It does, no, they charge.
They would probably charge.
Not if we suspend, not if we suspend the rule.
No, we're suspending the charging.
Right.
Yeah, but it was a peanut butter and jelly sandwich, and I still got charged two bucks for it.
Right, right, you still get charged.
Yeah, it wasn't free, it was a free lunch, it's, that's not what it's about.
So what I'm, what I'm saying is not.
If he doesn't get charged for it, we don't have to pick, take it out of the general fund at the end of the year.
Right, I mean, isn't the point more like, once you get to zero, you're at your peanut butter?
That's a kind of.
No, when you're at negative ten.
No, when you're at ten, you get peanut butter.
That's not being changed by, by June first.
No.
You may find out that some of these kids have got the money to pay and they just forget to pay.
Okay.
Or they prefer the peanut butter and jelly sandwich.
So, Deanna Harris.
Wait a second, we have a motion on the floor.
Yes.
Can we vote for the motion?
Can you repeat that motion?
To suspend the policy.
As of June first.
As of June first.
Okay.
The policy that allows.
Charging.
Overdue charges for lunch.
All right, all in favor?
That's a ten dollars, right?
Negative ten, we get the negative ten.
One, two, three, four.
Aye.
So wait, no Sue? Yes, Sue?
Yes.
So four, five, six, seven, abstain. Abstain, so seven in favor, no opposed, one abstention.
Um, that's not the right number.
There's eight of us here.
Yep.
Oh, that's right, okay, never mind, sorry. I was thinking, no, we're shutting that, but you two stepped out momentarily.
All right, okay.
I'm gonna get you every time.
Bartlett field trip request.
Okay, this is a repeat field trip, but it's out of state to the Boston Aquarium for grade three from Bartlett. Looking to go on June fourth, leaving at eight-thirty, coming back at two-thirty, again, repeat field trip.
So repeat field trip, no motions required.
Unless somebody wants to.
Unless someone makes a motion, it goes through.
All right.
Can I ask an inquiry since?
Yes, you may.
Which subject area do the third graders have for the Boston Aquarium?
Ocean animal and habitats.
Cool.
Okay, do we see any motions? No motions, have a good trip. Um.
We did D, right?
Yep, we've just covered D.
Um, I have E first read policies.
Yes, we've got, uh, three first reads, um, the easy ones, right here is the bomb threats and the bomb threat regulations. Uh, we have recently updated our procedures, our policies were not in line with them. So the policy is changed to have similar to model language from the Manchester School Board Association. And then we took out a lot of that information that we had previously and took what we have as our new procedures in our books, which were with the school district with police and fire, and we put those into the regulations. So then everything will be, what we're doing and what our policy says will be the same.
Okay.
Um, so yeah, it's taken word for word from what's already in the policy. We also took a look at the board elections, because that was, again, uh, our procedure was not matching to our policy. Um, our policy says that it would be a plurality vote, which just means if you're for it, you put a hand up and that's it. To try to come up with a compromise to add in what our, um, procedure has been. Uh, the language you'll see in there is adding in if there's only one candidate, having a yea-nay abstain vote. And if there is more than one, continuing with the plurality vote is, that works best when you have more than one candidate. We just haven't had more than one candidate for chair or vice chair in a number of years. So it was, it was trying to get every possibility in there with keeping our current practice in there as well.
Okay.
When do we ask questions? This, because I thought in two weeks we vote on it, so.
I was about to ask if anybody had a question.
You skip, you skip a meeting, you skip a meeting and then you come back.
So any questions, Dan?
Yes, I kinda do.
And you can ask them at the next meeting as well, too.
Okay. Oh, we skip a meeting though, right?
Right, you have to skip a meeting, so we have a chance to read them and ask questions before he comes back.
Having worked in elections for seven and a half years, it's, a vote is a vote and when, I think the policy was accurate, the way it was stated before it's changed here. I think it works well and I think it works in concert well with the way we go to the poll. When we go to the poll and we look at a ballot, we do it in private, but sometimes when you do a recount and you look at the ballot, you see someone writing something, no way this person, but that's not what it, in essence, we do. It's always a positive vote, so that basically it doesn't show anybody saying either nay or abstaining, it's just a positive vote. And when you have one person, if one person votes and nobody else votes, that's a plurality.
Yep.
And that works. I, I don't think the policy actually needs to be changed at all. I think it works well the way it was written.
And if we wanna go that way, then we should change our practice.
Okay.
To go by the, by the policy.
Mark the calendar, I agree with Dan on this one a hundred percent.
What's today?
Right?
Mark the calendar, I think we draw on this one.
If there's, if there's a board consensus that we wanna change our practice, I have no problem taking it down
or wanting to revert something back to the committee or anything like that.
I think, you know, we all should, the next board meeting, if we have any more questions or concerns, maybe give some direction then.
That's it, I think we need to let this sit.
Yeah, let's think about it, make sure.
Anybody have anything else additional before June eleventh, all right? Okay.
Yeah, you should get him in so he can get approved before we leave for the summer.
Okay, so we'll be ready to vote on this, we skip, um, any questions, next meeting, and then we'll vote the meeting after. Um, teacher nominations?
Should be plenty there. So I have, um, actually some, two resignations, a couple of nominations, and then nominations for our technology and SSS positions, which are those positions that are not in any union. So, um, I'm bringing two resignations forward. Um, Tracy Chikarini, who is the school psychologist who works in our EH program at the middle school.
EH program?
In our EH, our, for, with our behavioral kids.
Yeah.
Um, and Nicole Ponti, who is our district ESOL, one of our new teachers. She was offered a position back in Salem, where she came from. Um, so that's disappointing, so, um, bringing forward those, both of those resignations. And you may accept them with regret if you would like.
Can we ask, uh, you made clear why Nicole is leaving.
Um, she has taken a position in Amherst.
Tracy has?
Yes.
I, I'm most to accept them with regret.
Do you have a second? I'll second. Second by Jen? All in favor? Unanimous?
Great, for, um, I'm bringing forward three new hires, three nominations for next school year. I'm bringing forward Miranda Donnelly, um, as eighth grade math, this is a teacher who will teach algebra. Um, and so, um, she is actually coming from Timberlane High School, um, moving closer to home. She's, she's been there since two thousand and nine. Um, she's more than qualified to teach Algebra one and Algebra two, that's what she was teaching at the high school level. She comes in at a master step three. Um, Joanna Hartson, um, also at Mountain View, fifth grade ELA and social studies position. Um, she is currently, um, she has worked at Mountain View all year as a long-term sub in two different positions, one as a reading specialist, one as a sixth grade teacher.
Fifth grade.
Fifth grade teacher.
Yeah.
Um, and so she, um, is a good match for us, because we've already kinda had experiences with her, so we know she will be successful, and, um, she comes in at a master step seven. And Carla Roy, um, who is coming in with us, actually is a new teacher for art, um, to cover Kathy's position, who is retiring at the end of this year, and, um, she's a new teacher, but I think she'll fit in nicely with us. So she comes in at, she's got a master, so a master step one. And remember, those are all, um, held on their step, um, because the teachers don't have a contract, so it's one step less than what they would normally be getting, just so.
Right.
We recognize that we did take that into account and those, so technically Miranda would be a master step four, but she's on a three because the teachers didn't get a contract, so.
Got it.
Yeah.
Any discussion?
I'll make a motion. I have a, which one you wanna do first?
Can I take the question?
Um, do you know what the budget was comparative to these three?
I don't. I do know that Carol keeps a running tab, um, when we hire and then as we get into benefits with them as well, um, because it all is one package, so depending, and she keeps a really good count, I can certainly bring that up at the next meeting, I don't have it.
Could you do that, please?
Yep. Um, but she keeps us, she keeps that over art, overall tab, um, because the individual line, sometimes it may be a higher salary, but we know they're only gonna take two-person health insurance versus family.
Okay.
So I can bring a, kind of an estimate of where we are with spending for.
Keith, do you have something?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve these three nominations as presented by Ms. Blackley.
Do we have a second? Jenny? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
We're unanimous. Okay, tight staff.
And I, yeah, and I apologize, I thought I had copied them, I'm thinking their copies are sitting in the copy machine in the office. Um, we, so there's two pieces to this, one is our technicians, we have five full-time technicians, one part-time technician. Five of the five full-time are two hundred and ten day contracts, the part-time is a hundred and eighty day contract, that's somebody here at the high school who also teaches two different contracts, though. Um, I am recommending bringing forward a thousand dollar increase for the full-time and five hundred dollar increase for the part-time. It's two, under two percent for all of them, they did not get raises last year. And again, as, we did not fill one of those positions for half the year. If you recall, we hired, I think, Haley, we hired mid-year, and so everybody else was filling in those positions. So given that we gave them nothing last year and they worked really hard to keep us together while we were down that one person, um, that we did not fill until mid-year, um, that's my recommendation for them. And I can give you more specifics if you want them, and I apologize, I thought I made copies.
Do we have the current salary mix of the, the total?
Yep, it's, um, we, oh, I don't have the total for all of them, I mean, I can tell you what they're.
You can, you can rattle them off and I'll get a good hint.
Yep, so for the, so, so, um, the part-time technician, this year's salary is seventeen-three fifteen, will go to seventeen-eight fifteen. Um, we have one at thirty-two-six fifty, that will be thirty-three-six fifty. One at forty-five thousand, that will go to forty-six thousand. One at thirty thousand, that'll go to thirty-one. One at fifty-one, and that will go to fifty-two. And one at thirty-eight, but just so you know what's budgeted, because she came in with less experience and the person who left was budgeted was forty-six, so there's a significant savings there. So thirty-eight will go to thirty-nine.
Jenny?
I'd like to make the motion to, um, give them those increases. I remember when Gary came to CNE and, um, spoke about technology, our numbers were so far down from, um, most schools and then like ridiculous as far as business goes with the number of technicians that they have per persons. Um, and, um, he really did explain how crazy these poor people worked.
They work hard.
Last year, so I would, I would be totally in favor of it.
Okay, do we have a second? Second by Sue? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We're unanimous.
And the other is, we have just three positions that aren't in, again, and not, no union, but they're in the SSS, support staff, oh, I always forget what it stands for. Um, we have our in-school suspension program instructor, um, and I'll jump ahead of your question, Dan, is currently budgeted at thirty-three-three-one-nine. Um, we have a tutor that works in the Alt Ed program, that's part-time, um, that's at thirteen thousand-two-fifty, and these are actually hourly positions, she makes eleven-fourteen an hour. Um, and then we have, um, Carol Smith, who's here at the high school, um, who is a career resource specialist, that's actually a grant-funded position, so really there's no impact to the budget, that's all fully funded through a grant, part-time, at seventeen thousand-seventy-four dollars. Um, I'm recommending a two percent increase for them. Um, again, they took no, we didn't give them a raise last year either. Um, for, for Deanna, it's a six hundred and sixty-six dollar raise, for Joan, it's two hundred and sixty-five dollars, and for Carol Smith, it's three hundred and forty-one dollars.
Okay.
It's almost embarrassing to give somebody two hundred.
Yeah.
Any questions, comments, motions, Jenny?
Make the motion.
Any motion is?
To accept.
Wait a second.
The recommendation.
So motion made by Jenny, second by Hank. Additional discussion? All in favor? Dan?
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay.
I'll give a reason.
Seven-zero-one.
I know technology, I don't know this.
Those positions, yeah.
Yeah, I.
They're kinda quirky positions, they don't fit anywhere in our budget. In the, um.
Yeah, so I trust you guys.
Which leaves us with other business that may leave come before the meeting.
I have nothing else.
We have no note public this evening?
I have nothing.